Thank you everyone who's standing, we'll call this. At this time, we're going to have a word of thanks. Thank you very much. At this time, we will ask that Ms. Everett, if you would please.
Glendale, allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. Want to welcome you all, each of you here to the Georgetown City Council meeting for Monday, April the 28th, 2025. We ask that if you come to the podium, be sure to speak clearly and loudly and give us your name and what you're, what you want to bring to council. Also, reminder that about expectations and so on, and code of conduct, that will have to be exhibited all the time. All right. At this time, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mrs. Wilkins Brent, Mr. Crisp.
Here.
Mrs. Hamburg.
Present.
Mr. Hampton.
Here.
Mr. Minke.
Present.
Mrs. Luffy Mitchell.
Here.
Mrs. Tinglestein.
Here.
Mr. Stein.
Here.
You can have this one.
Okay, thank you. All right. Somehow I misplaced my agenda, that's no good. It starts with a B. All right. At this time, I will maintain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
For April 17th, 2025.
So moved.
Okay. All right, thank you. Ms. Hamburg made the motion, now the second. Second made by Mr. Hampton. Are there further questions and or comments? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Let the record reflect that the motion passed. You should have received in your packet, the receipt of check registries. If you have received that, please raise your hand. Let the record request, let the record reflect that everyone received it. At this time, we have the events application, Juneteenth Gospel Explosion. Mr. Barry Tilford.
First of all, without, with an opportunity full of leaders and conscious community leaders and the council, I'd like to let everybody know that we encourage you to come out to the Horse Park Friday. This is the biggest fish fry and entertainment that you've seen, trust me, and it's an illustration of some of the top jockeys and trainers. And give this out, that I'm from Scott County, the first of, I think we, we gonna, I'm gonna circle back and bring the wagon back to. Scott County is a home of the Kentucky Derby's first trainer, Anzel Williamson. And he won the Kentucky Derby and several other horses. And then also Scott County is the home of Harry Lewis. You know, you see that blue horse all over Lexington? Well, Scott Canyon trained that horse. And the list goes on and on. And there'll be, we have an Oscar Dishman Award, another Scott Canyon that has several horses in the Derby. And he's been, he's, we have an award in his name. And two other award that we give out is the Blacksmith of the Year Award. And those are named after two Scott Canyons that done over 12 Triple Crown winners. That's Johnny Collins and Dwayne Raggen, they're right out of Scott County. And so I think we have an opportunity to intersect, as we got some attention about what's forgotten. We're gonna start intersecting next year, black and white jockeys from Scott County. I think that we should proudly marquee the significance impact that the horse farms, the owners, and the black labor paved the way for pioneering innovative ways of making this a proud place of horsemen, period. Again, this Friday at Kentucky Horse Park. First I want, you know, that prayer kind of inspired me, hold it. If I can give you this, we ain't gonna worry about the hat till later. Put that up front if you don't mind, so they can see it. On June 14th, you'll see rather me going through all the descriptive, a marquee illustration of what's we envisioning to do at the Pavilion, Mayor and County Judge Executive. Why you was at our successful? Pass it on. Our very, we had, we had, in regards, thanks for the help and the suggestion about putting the banners up at, on the museum. Who was at the suggestion? There you go. Well, we couldn't get nobody into place. Okay? On February the 28th, right? It was packed house. Three television stations prior to that. Fox TV did a special on me and Terry. And with that being said, the week before, you pass it on. This is our gospel activation that we did in partnership with Georgetown College. And we had a professor from the University of Louisville. Here on the back of it is my spiritual advisor, is my son-in-law and my daughter, one of the biggest African-American churches in, in New York. And his, his, his dad is a national bishop. But I want to say something first after that prayer about this event on June 14th. Called the Juneteenth Gospel Explosion. Juneteenth is a national holiday. You can put these out too. A national holiday of observance. But our goal is to have a day of atonement where the slave ancestors forgive the slave owners ancestors. That we bring an example of how peace and visionary pathways to GPS, GPS to heaven are not only marqueeed, but illustrated. We have 12 of the top recording artists in gospel and regional soloists that are all from, not from Georgetown, that are performing, so we can bring people from out of town. We've been running specials with the radio on weekends in regards to this. But I want to say, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, distinguished council members, I'm giving you out of peace here. It's indeed my honor and privilege to stand in front of the chambers of the council that were both my mother and father had the privilege to have served for years. They humbly send their regards and appreciation for your current service to our community. And in knowing the scope of duty and your commitment to the city, they send their thoughts and prayers to you. Today, I, I credit them for the inspiration that they have inspired in echoes of our ancestors' Buffalo Foundation, of our call of duty. Currently this week, we, we do a salute at the Horse Park, of course. And we'll be featuring our documentary film that'll show the, the museum activation, a lot of other films, content we show. And we ask you to support it. It's a, it's an annual event, Mariner, County Judge Executive, and Tourism have been supportive in the start of it. With that being said, I came in regards to our next event after this weekend, this, after this weekend, which would be the Gospel Explosion. We have booked and produced gospel recording artists, praise teams, soloists, and the best gospel production outfit known to any parishioner or person of faith music. And we had them here for Georgetown College. They said, if we have anything else over here when it comes to sound, don't bring nobody but them, they want to use them too. Regional pastors will serve as our ambassadors here at the, at the Pavilion. We want them to serve with short speeches in between the acts highlighting Georgetown's past and, and future. And mention Juneteenth is a significant national holiday. But our mission is to intersect as proud Americans from all races, creeds, and colors and religions that mirror our paths of Georgetown College prayer breakfast with us. And connect community, regional communities to come to Georgetown and see how great it is. We seek to make Georgetown a place of atonement, peace, and love through our programming. We come to you today to confirm the usage and request you confirm the usage of downtown Pavilion for the Gospel Explosion. We've met with Tourism, they've approved it, and our co-sponsored event, we hope to continue for years to come.
Motion is made by Ms. Mitchell. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second made by Ms. Hamburg. Are there further questions or comments from this council? All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Let, let the record reflect that it passed. Thank you, Mr. Tilford.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Next on the agenda will be the public comments. And a reminder of public comments of the process, how this works. You will have, you will have four minutes. Again, come to the podium, please state your name. And for the, for the record, you have four minutes. You'll be timed by Madam Clerk here. Within three minutes, she will let you know that you have one minute left. And at that time, if you will continue, will, will finish up your thought and then, and be respectful and mindful that others will be able to come and listen and present their concerns to this council. All right. First, we have Ava. Okay, I'm gonna butcher your last name, so you're gonna have to come and just tell me what it is. And you want to talk about permit chickens within city limits. Okay.
Good evening. My name is Ava Schuldenauer, and I'm a fifth grade student at Stamping Ground Elementary. I was invited here by Ms., by Ms. Hamburg. I have been a member of Scott County 4-H Poultry Club since 2023. In 2023, I was reserve champion at the Kentucky State Fair in Junior Showmanship with a pullet I raised. In 2024, I showed grand champion, I was grand champion in Junior Poultry Showmanship at the Kentucky State Fair with another pullet I raised. And I think that people should be allowed to have chickens inside the city limits. Chickens have taught me responsibility. For example, you have to check food, water, and collect eggs every day. You also have to clean coops every week to keep the smell to a minimum. They also have taught me that if you work hard, study hard, and believe, you can do anything you put your mind to. And what I mean by study is that you need to know what your chickens' needs are based off their breed. I think that everyone involved would benefit in many ways. First of all, it helps kids get a grip on reality and realize where their food comes from. Secondly, it gives kids something to learn about right in their own backyard. For example, it teaches kids where work ethic. Having chickens shows kids that it might not be easy, but seeing happy, healthy chickens is rewarding. Some people are concerned about the smell and noise, which I don't blame them. But if you keep their coop clean, smell is not a problem. And chickens aren't really that loud, at least no louder than dogs. If someone, if someone's chickens came into your backyard, you have every right to be upset. But you need to let the owner know because that is not your problem and they should have to deal with it. If they want to keep their chickens, they'll have to figure something out. Obviously, there should be guidelines, such as having a limit on the amount of chickens you can have. You can do more with chickens than just take care of them. People can also raise them for meat and eggs. After all, shouldn't everyone have access to fresh farm, fresh farm eggs? People also train them to be an inside pet. They can show them like I do, or they can just raise them to be a companion. Even if you have chickens, no one forces you to do these things with them. In summary, having chickens has many benefits, but lots of fun and learning. Thank you for your time.
All right. Next. Okay. Catherine Hager. And she wants to talk about permit, permit chickens within city limits.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. While I've already spoken on the poultry issue once, I wanted to return to the conversation after watching the last city council meeting. For those who were unable to, to attend the previous meeting I attended on March 10th, my name is Catherine Hager, and I'm the current president of the Scott County 4-H Poultry Club and a nationally recognized poultry exhibitor for the last 10 years. In reviewing the last council meeting, I realized with the rapid growth of our city, we are facing struggles with aging infrastructures and the staff that maintain our city, both in the manual labor and in written policy. Subsequently, this infrastructure of our city includes, includes. Oh, sorry. Includes our code enforcement officers and the ordinances they must enforce. The council noted that enforcement of the proposed ordinance criteria is a primary concern, and whether this is due to staffing concerns or a systemic issue of training was not made clear. Regardless, I come forward to propose a solution or an amendment to propose, to the proposed ordinance that would remove much of the strain and hopefully alleviate concerns. This amendment would be utilized, would be the utilization of the Kentucky Department of Agriculture and the Commonwealth's National Poultry Improvement Plan. The NPIP program, as it is known, is the result of years of collaborative work between state and federal officials enacted in 1935 to protect domesticated fowl from disease. It is, it has expanded to, to include a new diagnostic testing and improved poultry standards of care. Within this plan, there are strict guidelines of housing, food storage, vermin control, disposal of deceased birds, as well as the state minimum of testing and avian flu, avian flu testing, which our ordinance would make mandatory. All of these parts of inspections are assessed every six months by an agent of the state veterinary office with the training and knowledge around poultry. Utilization of an existing resource funded by the state would remove the bulk of the burden from our city's code enforcement, as well as reduce additional training needs for this new ordinance. Permits could be issued initially with photographs of housing and food storage along with educational requirements with the extension office, and then renewed yearly with coffee, with copies of state inspection paperwork that occurs every six months attached. This also removes any accusations of failure to act that are often levied at our enforcement officers and provides an established standard of care by an agency that has long been respected as such. For it, and for added legitimacy, to this point, the national database does provide pass fail for public viewing 24/7, 6, 365 days of the year. Ultimately, ultimately, I leave everyone with this. Owning chickens is a privilege. They can be expensive, they can be inexpensive, but also fun, intelligent, engaging animals. Being an NPIP participant for almost a decade, I can understand the concerns. Some may have, wow, some may have, having a state inspector come on site. But it costs nothing to be a participant, it costs nothing to the city, and it gives the neighbors a sense of peace. I strongly feel that if the council takes more agency collaborative stance with this proposed amendment change and relies upon existing industry knowledge, skill, and action plans that have been existence for 90 years to enforce than owning chickens in the city is not as cumbersome as it may appear. We have an opportunity to come together collaboratively on this topic. It is not a topic with political agenda. It is requesting the autonomy to own a few birds for food and enjoyment at no cost to you. I thank each and every one of you for your time again tonight.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Rick Tooney. Tooney, excuse me. Thank you.
I don't have anything to do except introduce myself. I'm the new executive director of the Housing Authority. So I moved here from Fort Worth in December. And I'm here to renovate our existing portfolio and then figure out ways to build additional units across Scott County. So I've, we've been reaching out, meeting several people already in the room here. Our department, police department, Stacy, Candace, Karen Leverance. Anyway, we're new, I'm new, I'm here to connect the dots. Put together a nonprofit to help us go out and get grants and then provide after-school service, after-school services. And really, to really renovate the 325 units we have and then build new. So we had a meeting last week, the mayor recommended I come down and introduce myself, and here I am. So I'm willing to meet anybody at any time about affordable housing. Anything you want to do, anything you want us to do, correct, anything that was on your agenda that didn't get done, let me know. I'm willing to advance the cause.
Thank you, Mr. Tony, and welcome to Georgetown. Next, Mr. Dan Holman. Will talk about town and leadership.
Hi there, I'm Dan Holman. Yeah, so I mentioned, I put that topic, town leadership. Pat Foley has been writing some letters to the editor, some letters, letters to the editor about describing, you know, events that happened at the council. And it's, it's kind of interesting to read. But she, one thing she mentioned is that the council has yet to really fully come together and, you know, have a leader, have leader, present leadership for the town. We're still sort of feeling our way around. So, and she mentioned the word step up, it's kind of time for people to step up. Because, because it's not just the mayor's job to bring issues to you. You all can bring issues yourself, and you can provide direction and requests for, for things that you want to go and help, and, and help clarify goals. And again, as a citizen, I'm still kind of waiting to find out exact, I don't have a real warm fuzzy feeling about what the priorities and goals envisioned of this town are yet. So, so we're hoping to get some discussion about that. So regarding, there's, so three agenda items tonight that, here's some just things that we could do to prompt discussion and prompt some direction and some, answer some needed questions and get clarification. So tonight on the agenda, there's, you know, as, as there has been, we just keep like every meeting, there's almost like hundreds of acres getting annexed into our town. Like Karen mentioned recently, the council meeting, that we're having a growth, we're about to have a growth spurt. And Georgetown, you know, we've known this is coming for about the last couple of years. COVID is over, and the waste, this big wastewater treatment plant, number one, is, expansion's almost done. And our new comprehensive plan was completed last year, which identified all this new acreage. So our town, as we've known for a while, 2025 is a year of growth. And we've been seeing hundreds of acres every meeting get annexed into the town for residential development. So then that begs the question about affordable housing, which is, which is, we say it's a priority, and it is a priority. But there's all these, hundreds of acres of residential housing getting built, but yet there's a missing piece, which is, we're not talking about, we're not asking about, you know, what's affordable about these things. So just one thing to consider, that there's a concept, many concepts, but one of, they're called set-aside's apparently. And this has come up in conversations from different people. You can have an ordinance where like when the development develops, they have, they have to set aside like 20% or so, or whatever, for affordable housing, whatever, you know, by whatever metrics that means. So a set-aside ordinance is needed as we continue to annex hundreds of acres of residential development into our town. Okay, regarding the sewer ordinance that we're talking about, so the green belt is very important to our town and the vision of our town. South of the town towards Lexington is a green belt, like almost a conservation zone is the vision defined in the comprehensive plan. So we have, so we did this development with the trailer park, and it was called an environmental project. So for environmental reasons, not development reasons, we built a sewer to the trailer park. But now, so there has to be an ordinance written as part of all this funding, this complicated funding. So regarding the trailer park, the, the Dwyer property, just could someone ask, this new lack of specifications on the Dwyer property? And Holden Fleming, if, I don't think he'd be embarrassed to come up, could tell you, just, there is a project going on you haven't been told about. Not that it's secretive, but you should know before you vote on this. Then the, really the main thing I wanted to talk about in the last 30 seconds, but this is really almost a, a very important thing, is this tax imbalance situation that we have in the county, in this, in the city. The city and county split taxes 50/50, which is very different than other, the way that other communities in Kentucky do it. And the county should put, is not putting the money back into the city like it should. And consequently, our budget's very tight, as we talked about. Fire, police, and stormwater are three services that the county should be funding more than they are. Could, could we please, this is an issue that's been going on for years. Steve Glass wrote a letter to you all about it. Could we please, during new business, someone ask a question about this? Thank you very much.
I don't think there's anyone else who wants to come before here. Thank you. Next is item seven, the mayor comments. One thing I want to say before we get started with this. You all received a, a, an email from Dave saying about the, from the funding that we would, we tried to get in February. And you, we went to, down to Frankfurt, I was invited to Frankfurt, and we received some funding. We'll give you more detail on that to bring to council later on, in reference to that, on accepting. But we received $342,000, $1,000.10. And that is for the Club, Clubhouse Project, bridge repair. But more to come on that later, all right? Item A, the executive order for the Georgetown Housing Authority appointment for Glenna Dees. You should have received the information on. You should have received the information on her background on that, you know, in my conversation. It's been a long search. It took a while because there are certain statutory requirements that I have to follow to make sure that this is done properly. So with that being said, I would like to bring to this council a, to get a motion to accept executive order for the Housing Authority appointment for Glenna Dees.
Can I ask a question first?
Yes, ma'am.
Is she a Republican or a Democrat?
She's independent.
She's an independent?
Yes.
Those are harder to find.
Yes. And just to give you some clarity, why that has to be, is that through statute, if on your council or your committee, if you have two Democrats on there, 50%, that's the limit you're going to have. You're going to have two Democrats, you're going to have a Republican and an independent, you're going to have two independents, whatever, but you can never be awarded 50% of that. So, any other questions? No. So somebody, who made the motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Ms. Hamburg?
Sure, I'll make a motion. I'll second.
All right, thank you. Ms. Hamburg made the motion, and second by Ms. Sampson. Do I have any questions or comments?
Can I offer clarification?
Yes.
Because I can talk about political affiliation, so it's not just Democrat or Republican. Just want to clarify, the language is political affiliation.
Thank you. All right, at this time, we'll have to have a roll call vote. Anna Clerk?
Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamburg?
Yes.
Mr. Ampton?
Yes.
Mr. Menke?
Yes.
Mrs. Lesby Mitchell?
Yes.
Mrs. Tinglestein?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Let the record reflect that the motion for executive order of the Georgetown Housing Authority appointment of Ms. Glenna Dees has passed. Item B, we're going to, we have to bring it another time because the police officer recognition for that cannot be here tonight, so we're going to just bypass that and move on. Next, we have item C, and we have with us tonight, as always, good to see you, the mayor, is the City Hall renovation update with Lower Sec Sergeant and Codell Construction Company. So I'll let you all come up, introduce yourselves, and tell us where we are.
All right, hello, everybody. I'll just do a quick reintroduction because I know we have some new faces. So I'm Elizabeth Hunt, and the Director of Architecture in the Lexington Office of Lower Sec Sergeant, and the Project Manager for the City Hall project. With me tonight, we have, if you all want to introduce yourselves.
I'm Wes Davis with Codell Construction. I'm the Project Manager, and this is Kay Sidwell. He's your onsite superintendent. He's here every day.
And we also have a couple members of our structural engineering team to help answer questions because I can give you guys an overview, but I am not a structural engineer for a reason, so they are here to help answer some questions. So we'll get started again, because we do have some new faces, wanted to give a quick sort of overall recap from the project in general. So to date, we have received 110 requests for information, so 110 questions about a lot of different things as we've uncovered things in the building. We have reviewed 168 submittals, so there's a lot that goes into the project. We have posted nine supplemental instructions, so some of those are clarifications, and some of those are just tidying up the drawings from these responses to the RFIs. And then we've also released seven bulletins, which are, for the most part, where we have uncovered things in the building and need a cost adjustment of some kind. So just a quick sort of administration recap of everything that has gone into the project to date during construction. Again, some of you have seen this a few times, so I will try not to belabor it. There were a lot of hidden items that we uncovered over the course of construction. We found steel columns where we didn't know we had them, we found brick walls where we thought we had wood stud walls, we found wood stud walls where we thought we had brick walls. So there were some adjustments needed to accommodate that. We found original hardwood floors in the building, which we've uncovered and planning on refinishing, which is great. We found gel cell windows that have been covered up in walls in the ground floor, and some other wonky things, we'll say, that have happened over the course of the years with different renovations that we are now uncovering and repairing as part of this project. So, sorry, if we can go back one slide, thank you. So to date, we have five change orders that have been approved. They're listed there on the right side. Those all have dealt with the hidden items that I listed there on the left side. Next slide. We do have four more change orders that are being priced right now. The first is a revision to the fire department connection. That was to deal with updated flow from the hydrant and tie into the main line in a different location. We have another change order, again, just to where we've had to make some modifications in the field during construction. We have found that the sanitary line is in poor condition and needs to be replaced. And then there were some structural stabilization issues, which we'll get into a little bit further in the presentation, that we found in the tower in what will be the mayor's office. So these are the four change orders right now where we have pricing in progress. We don't have that finalized yet. We're still reviewing the pricing and hope to have that resolved in front of you all in the coming weeks. So moving on, and stop me if you have questions anytime. Yes.
Yeah, so the sanitary line, are you talking about inside the building or outside?
Outside the building. So as soon as we go out of the building, the line that goes basically from the building over to the main line that is in the alley, we got about two feet into the line, and it was filled with debris and could not get anything to run in it. So, and feel free to jump in if there's additional.
We tied in like the geothermal loops, where we tied those in, they were expected, from what we have heard, the line looked in poor condition, which is why we decided to run a camera over it and just set the little camera. GMWS has provided the camera too, as they recommended replacement.
So about how much line are we talking?
About 60 feet. Plus or minus.
Oh, council, before we, if you've got any more questions, please remember to turn on your mic when you're speaking, okay? And then, all right, thank you.
So just to sort of give general update on where we are with the project in general, on the exterior, on the backside, we have the dormer connection from the new third floor to the new stair tower that is underway. We have the metal roof that has been installed nearly complete. We have a little bit left on the tower to do. And then window installation has started. On the ground floor, the underside utility work that's in the new mechanical room has all been completed, so that new slab has been poured. We have, well, in progress, we still have the sort of corridor wall framing. We do have the new ceilings in, and then we are continuing to monitor the water infiltration that was at the sort of front of the building, right under the entry. There are times where it rains and we don't see water in the building, and then there are times when it rains and we do see water in the building. So we're trying to continue to monitor that, engage with the next steps are, you know, again, like we've talked about previously, looking at some of, when we start doing the site work out front, we'll be able to uncover a little bit more about what's going on underneath that front sidewalk and be able to tell a little bit more about what next steps might need to be to fix that.
But the, there is a fix that you're planning on doing either inside or outside?
Yes, we just don't know what it is yet until we see the extent of what the groundwater situation is. Continuing on the ground floor, we have new openings that have been cut into the masonry walls, and we do still have some underground work in progress in the electrical room that should be finished here shortly, and then we will have all slabs in place. Moving up to the first floor, so the images here are looking at the new council chambers from both directions. So nice, big, open, really what we were shooting for in there. We have the walls in place, we're still working on the ceiling framing in there and getting that drywall installed. Continuing on the first floor, so the platform for the council bench has started installation, and we are putting up the framing for the different TV walls throughout council chambers. And then the council lounge, which I believe this is a change since you all saw this last, so the front of the building that was originally labeled as a multipurpose space is now going to be the council lounge, and the walls are in progress in that space. Moving up to the second floor, I think you'll see a big difference here from what we have showed previously. This is where we uncovered the bulk of the hardwood floors. So the walls are all framed, drywall is installed, we're still working on overhead MEB, and the wood floors have all been uncovered and patched where needed, and sanding is in progress in preparation for staining. This is just a few more images because there's a lot that has changed on the second floor. Moving up to the third floor, this is obviously where you're going to see the biggest transformation, where we're turning that attic space into office space, so the wall framing is complete up there, the drywall has been installed, we're working on finishing the drywall, and then the skylights have been framed. The raised floor has been installed in the mayor's office, and the window installation is in progress. And then we'll get to the structural stabilization in just a few slides, I promise. We have a new interior stair. It now goes from the second floor up to the third floor. No more climbing on ladders to get to the attic. That's great. I appreciate that probably more than anybody. Our elevator installation is also in progress, so the shaft has been installed all the way up through the third floor, and the elevator itself is in progress. There's not much of an update on this from the last time that we met, but the vault that was in the city clerk's office, we have taken that door, we have reinstalled it as a decorative feature on the second floor, so when you come off the elevator, that is the first thing you see, a little history about the building. And then the gel cell window, again, we are going to uncover and highlight that in the corridor on the ground floor, and we are not quite there yet to getting that one repaired, but it is coming. Just a general hidden conditions update, again, on the wood floors, you can sort of see the progress here. The image on the right, you can see that small sliver of what the original floors look like, and then right next to it, where we've sanded it, and then the image on the left is kind of fully sanded and prepped for staining. We've talked about the water infiltration a little bit, so again, we're just continuing to monitor that and really trying to nail down, I think it's more of a groundwater issue, and how much is coming in and how much is staying in the ground will really determine whether we do something inside versus outside. One is a lot more extensive than the other, so as soon as we can really uncover what's going on, we should know more about how to proceed.
Mayor? Yes.
Just a question, in regards to the infiltration of the water, you said that you will fix it either by inside or outside?
Mm-hmm.
Is that correct?
Yes.
How will you, I mean, with the frequency of rain or infrequency of rain, and you said it sometimes leaks and sometimes doesn't, what is this area going to be used for?
This is all storage.
Storage?
Mm-hmm.
So is there going to be drywall, and it's going to be covered up?
It is going to, so because of the extent that we saw down there, because it's going to remain as storage, we actually are leaving the walls exposed.
Okay.
Which will allow us to be able to see when things come in. You know, we considered going back with bird walls and venting it to allow the cavity to air out, but we just felt that with this being a storage space, that leaving it exposed was better because then we could see when we had an issue more easily.
Okay, thank you.
We're hoping, so it's the front of the building. If you look at the front entrance, it's this wall. We're hoping as soon as Kay can start this exterior renovation and we take all these sidewalks out, we're anticipating that we're going to see that that earth has settled right in that area, and that's probably where it's infiltrating at. So in the next few weeks.
Thank you.
Okay, so, mayor's office. And I'm going to give you a brief overview, and then if you have questions, that's why I have my handy structural engineers here to help. So as we got the windows in and were able to see more in that space, we found cracks over the windows, and you can see them there. It's just the two exterior walls of that room. You can see in that image on the right that's circled in red, there are large cracks over the windows and then below the windows from sort of that point load that comes down in between the windows. And you have that on both of those exterior walls. So that is indicating that the wall is failing. It's starting, it's starting to push out on the exterior side, and it is going to, I don't know if buckle is the right word, but fail is the best word I can think of. So without repair, that wall will completely fail. If you want to go to the next slide, just to show the other condition, again, there's sort of an additional crack on that side, even though we have two windows opposed to the three windows. We have met, and we do have a solution, if you'd like to go to the next slide, which essentially involves adding steel to brace that wall and essentially sandwich that wall together, so there will be steel on the inside, and there will be plates on the outside that anchor everything together and essentially sandwich it. I am really oversimplifying what is involved. On the inside, we don't want to have the steel beams exposed, because it needs to be a nice finished space, so we plan to just drywall around the steel and make it almost like a picture frame to the windows. I'm going to stop there for a second and see if you all have any questions.
Questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
And so this was exposed after we took the wall that was existing off? Or why didn't we know it sooner, I guess, is the question?
We didn't, we could not see it sooner. Some of this was uncovered as we were able, with there not being good light up there, without us being able to get up there and up close to the wall, we just were not able to see it before during design. So as the space was brighter, as we got in there and we're starting to look at the wall, because there is plaster repair that needs to be done in there.
Right.
So as we were starting to look at that, we noticed these cracks, and they were not just cracks in the plaster to be repaired, but were in the entire wall cavity.
And have we done a cost estimate for upgrade, or is that yet to be determined?
We have gotten pricing on it. It is being evaluated right now. We sort of did an estimate of cost when we were looking at the repair, and we are looking at that against the pricing that we received to figure out if we need to make some adjustments.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, sir, Mr. Menke?
So having uncovered the third floor issues on two walls, has there been extensive review below on the second floor to evaluate any travel in both of those cases?
Yes, and I'm going to let Brian come talk about that because he's the one that actually did it.
Hi, my name is Brian McMillan. I'm with Brown and Cubic and Structural Engineers, and I'm the structure engineer of record for your city hall. So we did look at it. You'll see on the first floor, you see the bay window steps out right there, so actually the third floor above is slightly pulling out. There's actually a wood header that spans over that bay window, and I feel like a lot of what's happened is the weight of the masonry over time. When you put a masonry wall on top of wood for a 100-year-old building, it creeps and sags over time. And then that brick likely moved down until it found its happy place and kind of stabilized there. And although it is stable right now, it's not a condition, we don't get into predicting when something will fail, but it's not something that we can calculate the load path, it's not structurally sound as is. So stable, not at a risk of collapsing at any moment, that's not what we're talking about, but it is something that requires repair. We do- We did look at the floors below. It's very interesting, and part of the reason that we weren't alerted to it earlier is a lot of the walls from the ground up have been stable the whole way. So, normally, when we're dealing with an old building, we see deterioration throughout, because a lot of times it's either based on the foundations or based on weathering. And we, of course, have some weathering on the outside that we are repairing as part of this project. But to go to the third floor and have those cracks is specific to the windows, the masonry, and the, kind of the structural load path of that third floor. So, it is isolated just to those areas, and you can bet that we have looked at the walls the rest of the way down below that. Yes, sir.
Sure.
I have a question, too. You mentioned what it would look like inside. What do those steel beams look like outside?
So, outside, we have six-inch round, right, little six-inch round plates that will be in, like, ten different locations on each side that will have, so that the bolts essentially will go through the inside, and all you'll see on the outside are those plates. And we plan to try to make those match the stone as best as we can so that they fade and don't stand out.
Okay.
Mr. Minkie.
Yeah. So, with having to reinforce two adjoining walls, is there any connection between those, or are they just independent?
So, the area concern is specific to the area between the windows. So, if you look at the picture that's on the screen, or that picture there, so it's the triangle portion that's kind of above and below the window right there. The jams on each side of the windows is sound. We've reviewed that, and we've done calculations for the loads that we're putting into those jams. So, the two frames don't connect each other. The two frames pick up the masonry in the middle, take it to the jam, and the jam's adequate, and then the same for the other side. So, they don't connect, but we have checked where the load goes back to.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Are you going to speak to the cupola above that?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Lots of birds up there right now, but we did go up there, and we did review that, and we're good to go. So, the condition, we don't need to do reinforcing up there, so. It starts, it starts where you see, and actually, the windows for the cupola above that are very, very close to the mayor's office ceiling. So, it kind of comes down where those columns are between the windows, that's the start point for the cracks, and then it goes down from there, and that's where the point loads are coming down.
Did you leave the ceiling at the, at the original place where the ceiling was before you go up into the cupola, or has that been changed up above? I've been up there. It's been a long time since I've been up there. But I've been up there and have looked around, and the cupola is adorable, but it looks like on the picture you've still got a ladder or a staircase to go up to it.
Yes.
And it'll be functional for something, but it's not ADA compliant?
It is not ADA compliant. We, the, so, actually, completely fitting out that sort of mezzanine level in the cupola was an alternate that was not accepted as part of the project. That's not to say that it can't be done later. We are reinstalling the stair up there. It won't quite be as scary as the original one that was there. It will be more stable, but will be in keeping, because that is historic, so it will be in keeping with what that stair originally looked like. It will just be a little safer to get up there. And then, the ceiling in the mayor's office, the tin ceiling.
Yeah.
We are keeping the majority of that.
So, you're able to reuse that OTN that's in there?
In pieces. So, we did have to sort of reevaluate that. Our original hope had been to restore it completely. It is a little more damaged than we had hoped, so we do have, we've modified that to be able to keep sort of around the perimeter of the room. You will see the tin ceiling, and we're able to sort of patch and repair that as needed, along with the egg and dart trim that's at the top of the wall. And then the center, kind of square of the mayor's office, will be modernized with drywall, and that's where the lights will be.
That's, that's the coolest part, is the ceiling trim in that room.
Yes.
And then the fact you go up to the cupola, and the cupola is just like, oh, my gosh, you don't want to leave up there.
Yes.
So, cool.
Mayor, if I can.
Yes.
Can we go to the next slide? And one, all the way to the end, I guess it is, right there, the pricing items, do we have a ballpark idea?
So, we do, sort of. So, we, on the, the cost for the fire department connection, we are roughly $18,000 for that. For the replacement of the sanitary line, we're at roughly $4,000 for that. The other two items, the bulletin six pricing and bulletin seven pricing for the mayor's office, are quite extensive, and we are still reviewing. So, and there's some, we want to make sure we have everything included that we need and that we've sort of crossed all those Ts and dotted those Is. So, we don't have an approximate ballpark for that yet.
Okay. The reason I bring that up is because, you know, $556,000 is left.
Yes.
And they're going to want new furniture, and that's the money that's going to be left for the furniture for city hall, so.
Yes. So, we started with this sort of combined contingency in FFNE of $775,41.25. I have my sheet in front of me, so I didn't have to do the math. We initially saw that as sort of a 50-50 split on contingency in FFNE, a little either way to really be able to cover everything. So, that would be $387,520.63 each, if that's an even 50-50 split. Ultimately, we'd like to leave between $250,000 and $300,000 at the very least for FFNE. We think that is what would cover the new furniture. So, to your point, depending on where we land with, with all the change orders, we are still within that realm of trying to leave that pricing. Any other questions on that?
Any questions?
So, real quick on the, so you see the upcoming task there on the pricing items, and then also with construction, continuing with window installation, installing the stair enclosure at the back, continuing with everything that has started with the MEP and the elevator and all the things, and then beginning the installation of the finishes with the ceilings, the tile and the flooring. Next slide, this just gives sort of a quick cost impact, so you can see what we started with, along with the sort of base construction cost, plus that contingency in there. To date, we have taken those change orders out of that contingency, so the contract amount is still that $12,490 and some change, whatever that number is, that is too small for me to see. And we will continue to do that with the remaining change orders in hopes of staying at sort of that 50-50 split, or as close to it as possible between the FFNE and the contingency. And then I'm going to turn it over to Kate and Wes on the schedule.
Mayor?
Yes.
Just a quick question.
Yes.
So, is there an updated layout of the function of each of the finished rooms on each of the floors as to what goes where?
Mm-hmm. There is. We can send that over. I did not include that with this update, but we can certainly send over an updated sort of color diagram that outlines that.
Kate, I'm going to let you go through this. Before he starts, so the big question is, when are we going to be done with the building? So, if you remember the last time, we had a, the fire department, or this is the audio visual change order, we had it 45 days. So, contractually, at this point, we're at August 15th for completion date. Now, this fire department connection is, there's a pretty substantial time extension that we're going to be bringing for that once it's all finalized. But Kate's going to kind of walk you through where we're at now for the next, you know, up until summer months.
Yeah, so as you all can see, this kind of carries us out through mid-July. Right now, we're still, as Elizabeth stated, we're on each floor still doing some framing, some drywall, minus the second, third floor, MEPs are still going in, and the sprinkler piping is going in as well. So, once sprinkler piping concludes, we can start running ceilings, ceiling grid, and then we can go with lighting, GRDs on all floors. As far as exterior work, our plan is to start at the south elevation of the building, or sorry, the north elevation, which will put us at the rear of the building, and just kind of follow around to each side to keep one of these roadways open for traffic and just general population use. So, I think we should make up some ground, hopefully. As Wes has stated, with FTC connection, there is going to be some added time, but with that added time, we're hoping that we can hope, beat the new scheduled, I guess, substantial completion date, so.
So, basically, this fire connection issue, we lost quite a bit of time. The last time we presented, that's been, what, two months ago? We have not been able to put the first sprinkler pipe or sprinkler head in the ceiling. So, we've been waiting this whole time to get this thing approved and through the process. So, we've had to manipulate the schedule and try to move around and get, you know, walls ready to paint. We started doing flooring in areas. But a lot of these rooms on the second, third floor, once the ceiling grid goes in, they're already ready for final paint, for the most part. They're going to start coming together pretty quickly.
Well, second, third floor, we've already gotten primer first coat, so as soon as ceilings go in, we can roll.
Any questions on the schedule?
Yes, go ahead.
When you were here last, what was the estimated finished date? Do you remember?
It would have been 45 days prior to this, end of April, I think.
Fourth.
So, you have 45 working days to that, and that's how we get to 8/15.
Okay, so, the end of April, and now you're looking into August?
Yes.
So, five months, basically?
When this fire department connection.
So, is that, is that the only thing that has delayed you?
Oh, no, we had a four-and-a-half-month delay for all the structural issues that were found in the beginning of the job. This project was originally supposed to complete last November or December, I believe.
Yeah, it just, it just seems like it's being drawn out. I mean, just, you know, with, with everything going on. I mean, I, I don't understand why, you know, it's taken so long on these issues. I mean, you say that the structural has been going on for four or five months?
No, it took, we added four-and-a-half months to the schedule for the redesign of the structural work that was found, all the unforeseen conditions. The fire department connection, they're asking for 101 days for that, and I mean, I don't feel like we could come to you with that, so we're going to try to get half of that at least, but, you know, that was an owner-requested item, or a city-requested item. Ninety percent of these changes, you see up here, unforeseen items that were not part of the scope of work that we had on the drawings. So, we've tried to better that process, but I mean, it's, it's a battle to, you know, you've got numerous subs that have to price these change orders that come through. There's just so much involved in it. But I, I mean, I think we're close to the end, hopefully, for change orders.
Any other questions? So, August 15th, you're talking somewhere along that timeline is being completed?
Until we ask you for the fire department connections, yes. But it's August Septem, 1st of September is what will be regardless. It'll start coming together pretty quickly.
Okay, any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right. Next, on the agenda, and I'm going to make an adjustment, change the agenda, so if it's okay, I'm going to go ahead and do that now, or should we wait till after the committee reports do that? But I'm going to make the adjustment. What I'm going to do is make an adjustment, I'm going to do item number 12, city engineering resolution for the new access point marketplace at Frankfurt Pike. I'm going to move it up ahead of the council committee reports, because we have those here, Eddie's here, and Eddie, and I believe there's some other people along this project that's here, so, council, if you have questions, we can call someone up, and we can entertain them at that time. So, Mr. Hightower?
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. We did something very similar to this on another project a few meetings back, where we had an ordinance that was passed years ago when they were building the bypass. They identified entrances onto the bypass, probably from agriculture farms and things that were there already, and they, that they foresee. And then this, when a new one is requested from a development, it has to come to the city to approve, in addition to the primary approval agency, which is the Department of Highways. The Department of Highways has to approve it first, and they have the traffic people that analyze the traffic studies that are submitted by the developer. And this is for a project Georgetown Express, or at the McClellan Circle, Georgetown Bypass. And the project is on the map. It's Marketplace on Frankfurt Pike is the name of the project. So, it's Frankfurt Pike and McClellan is where the new cut is proposed, and it's shown as a right-in, right-out in the square section that's on the map that's attached, and we're asking for your approval for that right-in, right-out, pending the highway department's approval of the plans and the final approval from planning and zoning.
You have heard the request, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Minkie, second made by Mr. Crisp. Are there further questions and/or comments? Although in favor of this motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Let the record reflect that this motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we then now will go to item D, and that's going to be the department reports. We got the fire department and code enforcement, okay? And we also have public works and city engineer. So, we'll let the fire department, if you want to come on up, Chief Thompson. You've got to have a drink before you start, isn't it?
No, sir, maybe that's.
Okay, all right. Just checking. All right.
All right, Mayor, council, thank you all for this opportunity to allow us to discuss our department with you all. Chief Administrative Officer Golden, Finance Director Clark, we thank you for your, just help with some of the slides that you've done with us, and just information, and just overall, thank you for what you all do for us. Before I get started, I just want to say that I've been with the city for 25 years next month, and I am honored to work here, and I think that the folks that I get to work with, not only within our department, but the staff that you all have, I'm blessed, you're all blessed, the city's blessed to have these folks. I know we're all up here asking for things, but I know the folks that are asking, and they're not asking because they want something, they're asking because we need something. So, I know you all have tough decisions, we have tough requests, so I'm going to, just going to get started. Again, I'm honored to be the chief of this department, and I honestly never thought that I would be the chief, but here I am, right? Can we go on and go to the next slide, please? So, our department, we're broken into three different divisions. We do operations, prevention, and we also have code enforcement. Next slide. I wanted to give you all an idea, and in y'all's package, you all have this, I'll send you an email as well, if y'all would like afterward with a digital copy. If you look at the org chart, two things that I want to hold, for you guys to look at, it's the two positions that are in pink. Those are the two positions that we have added to our department since 2007. None of those are line personnel, they're administrative positions. Our training chief was added out of necessity with the amount of recruit classes that we've had over the last several years with the retirement, and most departments our size have a training officer anyway that oversees all training for the department, oversees training for the recruits, helps set out the training schedule throughout the year. The other position that was added was the Assistant Chief of Prevention. That particular role, that was out of necessity as well. Back in 2017, when I was the fire marshal, Mayor Prather asked if I would work with code enforcement, and it went from working with code enforcement to code enforcement coming underneath of the fire department. Once they gave that to us, I got promoted into the Assistant Chief of Prevention. I was the Assistant Chief of Prevention and the Fire Marshal and the Director of Code Enforcement. When I had the opportunity to become chief, I knew it was too much from one person, so we... we split them up, but those were the two positions that we have added. If you look at what's in the green, those are our code enforcement positions. Code enforcement is a separate agency within our department, but they are part of our team. I'm glad that they are with us and the work that they do each and every day to keep our community not only clean but safe, they do great work. But, you'll see the code enforcement falls underneath the Assistant Chief of Prevention. That's also where your Fire Marshal, your Fire Inspector is. It's Assistant Chief Cam Johnson. His role is to make sure that we're getting out in the community, we're doing our events, we're putting stuff on social media. The best way to stop a fire or to put a fire out, it never happens in the first place, and prevention is, you know, key to what we do, and he does a great job with it. On the operations end, we have Assistant Chief Seth Johnson, and his job is to make sure every day that, you know, operationally we're sound, the trucks are up and running, everything's good to go, the men and women have the equipment that they need, and they're getting the training that they need to have to provide for our community. Next slide. We're a service-based organization, we do not bring in any revenue, our sources of funding are general revenues or tax dollars. We also do a lot, though, with grants. We try our best to make sure that, you know, we know that it's, a lot of people are asking for a lot of different things, we do our best to make sure that we can get grant money to free up money for other things. Anything from the training center, we've gotten nearly a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the training center, we've gotten close to a hundred and twenty-five thousand for the hazmat truck, just other things that we've done, and Assistant Chief Johnson has been instrumental in that, and now we have some additional help as well with our grants. I put the Citizens Fire Academy Alumni Association on here as well, they're also part of our team, we're glad to have them. They're men and women that came through our Alumni Association, and they wanted to figure out a way to help us and help the community even more. So, what they do is they actually raise money to help us pay for fire prevention materials, they pay for our Christmas dinner every year. They're just, they're great people, and we're excited that they're part of our team. Next slide. So, what do we do? When I first started with the fire department, I literally thought that's all we did, was put fires out, and I quickly learned that there's a lot more to it. Fire suppression obviously is a key to what we do, and there's nobody else coming, it's us. We also do emergency medical calls, everybody on our team is an EMT. A lot of times, we will get to a patient, whether it's a car wreck, somebody at home that's fallen or had a heart attack, we'll get to them before Georgetown Sky Academy EMS does. We'll start patient care, when EMS arrives with a paramedic, we work with them, transfer care to them. Vehicle extrications, that's another thing that we do. Again, if you're in a car wreck and you need to get out of that vehicle, we're the ones coming for you. Technical rescues, you've seen a lot over the last little bit, just with the flooding that we've had across the state. Our Swiftwater team is in place, we have boats, we're able to get out and help within our community. We're also asked to request, we're requested to help out with other communities. We've sent teams to Bowling Green, we've sent teams to Campbellsville, whatever we can do to assist other communities as well. Confined space, if you think about Toyota, think about some of these factories, the pits they have, that's another technical skill that we have. Rope rescues, if you go over an embankment in your car, we can figure out how to get you up there. Maybe not me, but some of these guys can. Collapse, with the candle factory that collapsed in Bowling Green, there was another collapse that we had that we were requested to send some folks to. Those are folks that go in these buildings that, you know, that are very unstable, but they know how to shore it up, they can go in there, they can look for folks, and that's what they do. Hazardous materials, that's a big one, just within our community, there's a lot of factories, there's a lot of chemicals in our community, Toyota, there's other places around, that's something that we work closely with EMA. We get tier-two reports that show us what these chemicals are, but we have to know what they are and how to handle them, how to address it when it comes. And then trench, trench is another one that we do, with all the building that's going on, you know, you've got to get the water lines in, you've got to get the gas lines in, and you'll start seeing these huge trenches that are out there. Our job is to make sure first that they're using a trench box, if we see it, we'll go talk, you know, talk to them, but if, God forbid, that trench was to cave in, we're the ones that are there to be able to get someone out. And we have had all of these within our community that we've had to deal with. Severe weather emergencies, I don't think anybody can deny that the weather is crazy now. The tornado alleys kind of shifted east, Bowling Green, Louisville, seems like they're getting hit a lot. We keep dodging the bullet, thank God, but, you know, the weather's getting crazier between, and it's even between the rain or the snow, right? This past year was wild, too, freezing rain. At the end of it, I've got anything the citizens need, because that's what we're here for. And if sometimes if somebody doesn't know what, how to fix something, or who can fix it, they call us, and our guys can figure out how to do it. They may be somebody that, you know, an older lady that can't get her water shut off, and her house is flooding, it may be at two o'clock in the morning, or senior citizen that's calling us because their smoke detectors chirping. Half the time is because they just want to talk to somebody, right? So, we're there, and whatever the community needs, we're ready for them. Next, please. So, that's the operations side. The prevention side, so anytime there's a fire, we investigate it. We do that to make sure that there's not some bad guy running around setting fires. We also do it, too, it impacts everybody, because if we do an investigation and say there's a toaster that caught something on fire, it goes into the system, and if there's multiple toasters that's causing this to happen, that's how recalls come about. So, it's important for us to investigate fires. Fire inspections, that falls again under the Prevention Bureau. We have over sixteen hundred buildings that we have to inspect in Georgetown each year, and that number keeps growing. That number, also, mind you, does include factories, it includes the schools, it includes the college. The State Fire Marshal, they've actually, they don't do a lot, right? So, they've put a lot more stuff on us locally, and that's just what's happened over the last several years, so our plate's getting more and more full with the inspections that we have to take care of. Again, if we go through a business and we see certain things, that can stop a fire from happening. When we go into these places of business, this is, you know, this brings in tax base, right, because it's bringing in payroll, it's bringing in all that, most importantly, it's somebody's livelihood, right? And if we're able to stop that from happening, a fire from happening in these businesses, then it's allowing them to keep providing for their families. The events, community engagement, we do our best to do touch of trucks, we go out there, and we, you know, anytime that someone asks, we typically try to at least go out there for an hour or two, just to make an appearance, and, you know, I tell our guys that maybe the most important thing they do that day is to talk to a kid, right? Maybe get them interested in it, in the profession, or, you know, make their day. Car seat education, we're right across from the hospital, so anytime someone has a newborn, they're knocking on our door. And again, it's one of the most important things we can do, put the car seat in safely, the baby's safe, mom and dad's happy. Code enforcement, that's its whole different animal, and you're going to hear about that next, but code enforcement falls underneath prevention as well. Again, I just want to brag on those folks. The two people that we have in code now are retired firefighters, so when they go out in the community, they're thinking about ways that, not only the nuisance calls, but they're thinking about what's going to keep our community safe, what's going to keep the firefighters safe if they have to go in that building, or the police, or EMS. So, they do a great job with that. Something that you all may or may not know, anytime these plans come in for new construction, the Fire Marshal sits at the table. I've had several meetings with you, Mr. Minkie, and we'll sit down and we'll talk, and, you know, we'll talk about where the hydrant locations need to be, or where the egress points need to be for the, just getting into the property. So, it takes a lot of time just dealing with all that stuff, a lot of follow-up, and then another thing we do, just working with the community, we work with Red Cross, and we are a smoke, we put in smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors. We try to do community sweeps, go through, try to find places that, you know, knock on doors and see if they need them, or if someone calls, anybody watching right now, you know, if you need a smoke detector, call us, we'll schedule and get it in. Next slide, please. So, a lot of these numbers here, you know, when you're looking at salaries and benefits, obviously, they're going to go up over the years, especially with this council and the previous council, just grateful for the additional raises that you've given to our employees, so the salaries and benefits are going up. You look at these other things, the big thing that you're going to see this year is the capital outlay. We've talked a lot about what we need, but this is the first time that we've put it in the budget, and, again, this is something that I feel very strongly about, so we do have a lot in this year for capital expenses, but I'll explain that here shortly. Next, please. So, what we'll do here, I'm not going to go over this too awful much, but I just want to kind of go over the staffing. Again, it kind of shows, just over the years, we've stayed pretty constant with the positions that we've had. You can see some zeros here and that, and that's where I was kind of doing dual roles and focusing on certain things, but, and then one of the things I just want to bring to your attention is on the engineer and the firefighters. So, when we created the engineer positions, and those that weren't on council last time, we created an engineer position for our truck company. That allowed us to have one person that was driving that truck every single shift, as opposed to rotating out like we normally did. Thought with that is going to help keep down on maintenance, you've got somebody that's an expert on driving that vehicle, it's eighty thousand pounds, you know, forty-eight foot long, it's a big truck, so we want to make sure that they know what they're doing. We didn't, we created that position, but those are actually firefighter positions, so we didn't increase our staffing, we just switched that around as far as what they did. This year, we are requesting six additional firefighters, and we do have our administrative assistants, and we're grateful for them. Next, please. So, the code enforcement team, I just want to put this on here, too, again, they're under our umbrella, they wear Georgetown Fire Department on their chest when they're out, Georgetown Fire Department on their vehicles, but they do not count as our head count, they are not firefighters, they're not hazardous duty, they cannot assist with what we're having to do when we respond to someone's call. So, what we've done is, there's been two code enforcement officers for some time, we had a resignation, and we bumped one person up, Sam White, into the senior code officer position, and then we have, we just hired an additional code. So, again, those are still the two positions that we've had, just an adjustment. The reason for that, I'm big on opportunity, and I think that when we've created some of these positions, whether it's the engineer position or whatever it is, it allows somebody to advance up, right, and give something for them to work toward. That senior code officer, he's still on the streets, he's still doing his thing, but as this office grows, which hopefully it will, it's going to be more of that lead person that's going to be helping out with that. All right, go ahead, please. So, this is just the same numbers, basically, just basically showing that we've stayed pretty steady, the additional positions, again, it's the Training Chief and the Assistant Chief of Prevention, and then code, I know that, again, Assistant Chief Johnson will be up here shortly to talk about his staffing. So, our staffing right now is fifty-eight and a half people, so we have a half, or, I'm sorry, not, she's full. It's a part-time administrative assistant position that we added again last year, and what that does, that helps out with some of our vehicle maintenance, there's a lot of scheduling, there's a lot of stuff we have to track on the computer, so that position has actually helped free Assistant Chief Seth Johnson on some of his stuff on operations. All right, next slide, please. I wanted to put this in here, too, and just kind of, I think this may be one of the most important slides in the whole presentation. Two thousand and seven, gentleman over there, Chief Bruin, guy that hired me, he was chief when we got the SAFER grant last time. The SAFER grant that we got hired nine people, and that got us up to four person, four people on each apparatus. That was the last time that we increased any of our staffing for our line personnel, the people that are going out to respond to the calls. If you can see the population in two thousand and seven, I'm using that as a marker, just simply for the fact that that's when we last increased our staffing, population was right around twenty-one thousand, according to internet and some searches. This year's projected is going to be right around forty thousand five hundred people, so we've almost, we've doubled the population. The calls that we've had, it's almost two and a half times the difference in the amount of calls that we're doing now, but the constants are the number of stations and the number of personnel that's responding each day, almost, this is for three shifts total, so seventeen per day. Next slide, please. This just shows as population grows, so does the need for our services. It's just common sense, the more people you have, the more opportunity you're going to have for a fire, medical calls, car wrecks, whatever the case may be. So, we've seen an increase in the amount of calls, obviously, that we've had over the last several years. So, this next slide, I want to kind of go through it. When we have a fire, it can be anything from a car fire, a dumpster fire, a building on fire, a house on fire, storage units on fire. We respond to a lot of different fires that a lot of people never even hear about, all right? The graphic doesn't put every single fire that we have in here, because a lot of times, if we can contain a fire into a room of origin, then it doesn't make the news, right? And when you have an apartment that's up, and it's, you know, blowing out every window, that's more what the news is going to show up for and show. We respond to a lot of fires, and you can see that this year, we're looking at a thirteen percent increase from the amount from last year, just based on where we are right now. Rescue EMS, again, we're all EMTs, we respond to a lot of EMS calls, and we're able to do that, we're seeing a ten percent increase this year, as opposed to last year. All the other calls, again, I know that's a generic column, but that includes everything else that we do, whether it's a hazardous condition call, service calls, those good-intent calls I'm talking about, when you're going out there and shutting someone's water off, or you're, you know, you're doing whatever it is that the citizens are requesting. Severe weather-related calls, special incidents, false alarms, we've talked about that before, too, up here. You know, we're seeing an increase in those calls, but over the last, if you look at two thousand and twenty-four and two thousand and twenty-five combined, you'll see a twenty percent increase in calls that we're having, and this number's just going to continue to go up. Next slide, please. So, our SWOT analysis, the strengths of our department, and without a doubt, the strengths are our people. The men and women that come to work for the Georgetown Fire Department, the work that they do, the dedication that they have to this community, it's second to none. I've been to a lot of different places and seen a lot of different departments, and went to a lot of different conferences, and we're ahead of the curve on a lot of these things that people are doing, and we set the standard high in our department. There's a commitment to excellence that we have. We do not necessarily have a problem recruiting, and the reason for that, I think, is because the reputation that our department has, people want to work for the Georgetown Fire Department. It's not for everybody. We'll hire people, and they don't make the cut, you know, sometimes they'll drop out or whatever, and that's okay. That's okay. But, we have a high standard, and the state, we all get a state incentive, police, fire, for training incentive. The state requires we get a hundred hours a year for our training. We double that. We require our men and women to get two hundred hours a year. Most of them get up to three hundred hours a year. We're giving out the end-of-the-year reports, and some of these guys have four hundred hours of training. I mean, they know that they've got to be prepared for anything, that, you know, everything changes, you look from anything to the vehicles that are out now compared to the vehicles that were out twenty years ago, between all the electrics, the hybrids, you look at construction now compared to what construction was back in the day, there's just a lot of differences, and we have to be ready for everything, so they do really hard work to make sure they are. Our ISO rating, for those that aren't familiar with that, that's insurance service organization, they grade fire departments throughout the country, and they say, this is what your rating is, this is what you're doing to make sure that your community's protected. We went from a four to a two. The reason we went from a four to a two was because we increased our radio system through what you all did, through purchasing that, with the water company has done, with their digital imaging, and what they're doing now with keeping track with the flows. We get We get bonus points for the work that our guys do for prevention, for code enforcement. The thing that's holding us up from going to a one but could potentially go back to a three is our staffing and our areas of coverage. That's where we are. They do that about once every three years, they come in and do, it's a very long process. You have to get a lot of different, just reports, and they go through everything with a fine-tooth comb, but we are a two right now. Opportunities, we have an opportunity to go to a one, and we could do that, and we would take an additional staffing, it would take additional stations. Another opportunity we have is mentoring, leadership, and development. I'm nearing the end of my career, and I think the best thing that I can do is to prepare for me to leave, right? So whenever I walk out the door, there's not, we don't skip a beat, and that's the same thing for these guys, right? Their job is to replace themselves, and I think we do a good job with that. Whether you're a captain going up to battalion chief, or your battalion chief going up to assistant chief. Our job is to make sure the next guy up is ready, so we do that. Opportunities, Station Four, land was provided by Toyota, so it's sitting out there right now, it's an opportunity for us. We have an opportunity to go after a SAFER grant. And I know that before SAFER grant was something that we had, and I know before SAFER grant was something that we didn't necessarily have, something in place that was gonna take care of it after the SAFER grant expired. And I know that's something, and I don't want to do anything until we know we have the resources, our guys don't have to worry about anything. But that's something that we could do, and I think I got a concept of maybe a way that we could figure out a couple of different options. The Training Center, the Training Center has been phenomenal for our department. Currently, right now, they have been doing welding, they're getting ready to stack the container containers. I know a lot of you folks have been out to the Training Center, it's a jewel for our department, and it's just another one of those things that just shows how serious our department is on training and what we do, you know, to prepare for this community. The guys have put the work in out there, they love it, and they just love going out there to do things. So we're excited about what can happen over the next several years with just additional props and buildings and things that we can do. So the weaknesses that we have, and this was mentioned in our Fire Committee meeting, and we've talked about it too, just in general. Our ladder truck is unreliable, I'll be a hundred percent honest with you. And I want to apologize again, I know there's some terminology that sometimes we use and take for granted, but our engine companies, when you think about an engine, that's what you see pull up, and they're the ones that have the fire hose on it, they pull it off, they're running into the building. Their job is to put water on a fire, their job is to put the fire out. The truck company, we have three engine companies responding every single day, one at each of our stations. Our truck company is one, we have one truck, and that is out at Station Two. It used to be at Station Three, but because of the run volume that's shifting this direction, we've moved it to Station Two. Their job is, is to go, when they get to the fire, they're the ones that's gonna be cutting a hole in a roof to vent, they're the ones that's gonna be forcing doors, they're going inside to search, they're doing everything without a nozzle, without a hose line. So it's a very important job, and everything has to work in tandem, be able to be efficient at a fire ground scene. We've had a lot of maintenance and repair costs on our ladder truck. This truck makes around a thousand calls per year, so it's running everywhere. Over the last four fiscal years, over fourteen hundred and sixty calendar days, truck one was out of service five hundred and fifty-seven. So thirty-eight percent of the time, it was out of service. We do have a reserve truck, it's a two thousand two, and because we've had to use it so much, the cost of maintenance on it is rising. We've had to spend, this past, this fiscal year, we're at about forty thousand dollars on our reserve apparatus. We're spending about sixty-five thousand dollars a year on maintenance on truck one. If you have a, if you have a new apparatus, you should be spending between ten to fifteen thousand dollars a year. And what we're doing with some of the things that Chief Johnson's been working on is some preventive maintenance, doing some things, just trying to figure out, you know, the engineer for the truck is gonna be a big help. But these things are just ran to death. The engine that's downtown has a hundred and eleven thousand miles on it. So it's, we run a lot, and, you know, we're, it's just, it's, the vehicles are just breaking down quicker just because. But our truck especially is something that we need. We do have three engines coming, we thank you all, one coming this June, two coming next spring, so. Increased response times. We took the quadrants, and that's how we design, that's how we figure out when they tone out, where we're going, dispatch lets us know where we're going. The quadrant that we have that shows for where Station Four would be going, it's Engine Two's response area right now. Thirty percent of the calls in that area are greater than four minutes. So that four-minute response is NFPA seventeen-ten, and what that is, that's based on the people that are way smarter than I am, that talk about, you know, how quick fire spreads now, the distance it takes to get to a home. When you get there, the second duty company, what they're gonna be able to do to make sure the first duty company's safe, when the truck company can arrive. Four minutes is that marker that we have, and majority of those calls that are out in that area, and I'll show you a map here shortly, are well past that. Just for an example, we did pull some of the numbers. There was a hundred and nineteen calls that were five minutes, sixty-six calls that were six minutes, thirty-six calls that were seven minutes. And anybody watching at home may think, well, what's a minute, what's two minutes? If you're inside a house, and the house is on fire and you can't get out, that's an eternity. Seconds matter to us, and I promise you that we get out of the house faster than anybody that I know in either department. Everybody has a phone on them, we got active nine-one-one. It tones out, we normally get a page from our phone before it gets dispatched out over the radio. We all have cats screens in our stations that show what's popping out, our guys are actively watching that. If it pops up, they're usually in the truck before the tone goes off. So it's not, it's not a delay on getting out of the house, they're wanting to get there. Increased staffing, I mentioned it earlier, two personnel in nineteen years, none of these are line personnel. Last station was built in nineteen ninety-six. I was thinking about this, right? So in nineteen ninety-six, I was a junior in high school. At the original Scott County High School, nineteen ninety-seven, I was the first to graduate the new high school. It was the new high school until we just built a new Scott County High School. My daughter's graduating from Great Crossing High School this year, our second high school that we've had to build. So it's just, those are the things that we have to think about, we are doing more with less. We're expecting more out of our guys, I'm expecting a lot out of our guys, but they expect enough out of themselves to do what they gotta do every single day. It's just a lot, right? And we just gotta make sure that when we're doing all these calls, you know, if we got an engine out downtown, then if that's out working something, that's why when you look at some of the maps and they're kinda maybe overlap a little bit, it's intentional because we don't want them too far apart, because if you end up having engine one downtown that's helping somebody, you know, at the mayor's house, and then your house, I know where he live. You end up having something going on there, right? That's why engine three's gonna be coming to help you out, right? So it's strategic what we do. So we are doing more with less. The threats that we have, it's just growth, it's growth, and I'm all for growth. But I do know, I've been coming to these meetings for a long time, and I watched them a lot when my dad was up there. We've been expanding our city every time we turn around, tonight, right? I know it's on the agenda. We got two hundred and thirty-two more homes, four hundred and eight apartment units, and forty-five point five more net acres of commercial land coming up for annexation. I'm all about it, I love Georgetown, I want more people to come here. I just wanna be able to provide the service that these people deserve. Increased weather events, we talked about that, that's something that's obviously out of our control, but we gotta prepare for it. That's something that we used to, when I started, you know, we didn't necessarily have to worry about that that much. Now, whenever, we're watching the Weather Channel, you know, and checking to see what's coming in, and, you know, preparing for that. You know, we'll do callbacks to see if we've got flooding or whatever, so that's something that's happening more and more and more. Larger buildings, we call them big box stores, your Lowe's, your, you know, these other buildings that are coming in. I know we're looking at potentially getting TJ Maxx and these other stores that are coming in. They're big, they're big stores, and the fire load inside of them is, it's a lot. And honestly, these stores are built to tear down and build again. Some of these places don't even carry insurance on them because it's cheaper to rebuild it. So that's what our guys are dealing with, more and more that you have to do, and the bigger the building is, the more fire personnel you have to have in order for it to be effective. The apartments, the apartments that we have now are not the apartments that were built in the eighties and nineties. If you look at the Mark, if you look at Amerson Farm, these are big, big apartment complexes, garages underneath of them. It's just, these are, these are big things, which again, is another reason why the ladder truck is so important for us. That's what's gonna allow us to get up, to be able to get these people. The distillery coming in itself is a lot, right? That brings a whole different area of hazardous conditions that we're gonna be dealing with, and the potential wood could happen if something did happen. And I do like bourbon too, so I'm all for it coming in. I talked about before, new construction, no construction. Granny's house is built better than my house, and Ms. Hamburg and I talked a little bit about this at the Fire Committee meeting. And Granny's furniture was better built than what my furniture is. You know, you had solid wood furniture, I got a couch that's full of foam. They got, Granny had hardwood floors, I got cheap carpet, right? So it's like everything that you have in your house that most of us have in our home now, it burns hotter, and flashover reaches stages much, much quicker. You're looking at flashover stages in Granny's house, probably thirty minutes for a room. Looking at flashover in my bedroom now, probably four or five minutes. Again, that's where that four-minute comes into play. And there's a cool video that I'll send you guys to that shows that. The battery plant at Toyota, right? That's another thing that we're looking at, these EV vehicles, great for the environment. Wish I could afford one, but they're hard to put out, they're very challenging in dealing with that. And some departments are just thinking about, okay, what do I do if there's an EV fire on the interstate? What's a EV fire in a Kroger parking lot? We're thinking about what if a semi load of EV batteries catches on fire, what if the plant, you know what I'm saying? These are things that we have to think about. Next slide, please. So our three goals, every goal that we've, we have is to keep our citizens safe and provide the services they deserve. Mr. Menke, I've heard you say it before, what's the problem, what's the solution? I got three problems and three solutions. We need to provide a reliable ladder truck for the city of Georgetown. What this will do, it'll reduce the maintenance costs and improve the reliability for our employees and the community. About a nine-month turnaround, with the nine months, what we would have to do with that would be a stock ladder truck. There's two different ways you can get a fire apparatus, you can custom build it, which is what we did in October of twenty-two. Those are the two coming in next spring. We bought one this past year because we had an accident, and we had to purchase a new one. We ordered in January, it's coming, it's already in construction right now, we just got an update this week, so we should get it in June. So if we were able to get that approved, what we would be looking at the first couple of months, trying to figure out what fits us. We're not just gonna grab one out of thin air, we're gonna pick what works for us. And then by the time you get that bill time in everything, you're looking at about nine months. For a ladder truck now, if you custom do it, it's anywhere from four to five years. And we actually have a plan in place, it's a seven-year, and there's different options, but we looked at as a seven-year plan for a finance, and with the amount of money that we're spending annually on the budget for maintenance, can offset that cost of the interest. It also would save us money if we purchased it now as opposed to a few years from now, just simply off rising cost. Reduce emergency response times to public safety, to improve public safety and emergency outcomes. So Station Four would expand our current coverage area to meet the four-minute response time outlined in NFPA standard seventeen-ten. I put a two-year marker on that. By the time that you look at it, six months for the blueprints, we've talked about that, you're about a year and a half. I presented this in May, in March of twenty-three, and was talking about a fire station in March of twenty-three. They're just now finishing the EMS building, they should finish it this month, it takes a while. But what that does over a two-year period, it's just more and more time that it's called, it's, we're growing, more people is out of that area that we need to cover, more wear and tear on our apparatus because they're going everywhere. Additionally, that station, just for reference, was three million dollars in twenty-three, we're looking at over four million dollars now. The additional of six firefighters, so what I, what I, my thought is, if we can hire six firefighters right now, then what that would do is that would help us maintain our minimum staffing. And again, for the, for those that aren't familiar with that is, we have seventeen people. If everybody's on shift, if everybody's working, nobody's retired, nobody's sick, nobody's hurt, seventeen people. That's what's gonna show up best-case scenario on a day. We will go down to fourteen. That includes your battalion chief, which is the shift commander, three people on each engine, and four on the ladder truck. If we go below fourteen people, every single day, we have two people on mandatory overtime list. You're working that day if you get hit. If we go below those two people, we do an emergency work pack, where it's basically, you're working today. If it has to, we'll be working that day, we're not gonna shut down anything, we're gonna make sure our citizens are provided. If we added the six firefighters to the shift, we would maintain what we have as far as our vacation allotment. Because what that would do is it would add two more people to the shift, it would allow us to not have to spend that overtime because it wouldn't hit the minimum as much. So we projected that could do a savings for that first couple of years. Now, once we did get the station built, things would kinda fall back in line, but this is a plan for, to save money for right now. If we were able to do that, we would start a process in August. Next slide, please. So if we end up getting a ladder truck, what we would do, they say that it's about two days of, two days a month that you should be able to do in routine maintenance on it, you should be able to get those types of things, or anything that's a major, major event as far as having to fix it, you're looking at about two days. There's some of the things that's happening on our apparatus now that sometimes it's out for a week, two weeks. From one fiscal year, it was out for almost the entire year. They had to actually remove the entirety of the ladder and do some things to it. So that would be something that we would start from the very beginning, making sure that we did everything that was expected of it, the routine maintenance, preventive maintenance, all that, we would make sure that we were doing it right. Average time, what, ninety-five percent of the time each month is what we would want. Again, right now, we're looking at about sixty percent of the time our ladder truck is in service. Compliance, a hundred percent of scheduled safety inspections completed on time. What Assistant Chief Johnson is doing now too with, working with a vendor that we have that we're very happy with. We do it monthly on our apparatus, well, first we do it daily, so every day, everything gets started up. Everything gets checked because we wanna make sure that if somebody calls at seven-thirty-one, we're ready to go. So guys normally show up at six-forty-five, you know, on their dime for forty-five minutes, or hanging out drinking coffee, checking the truck in. That way, they're ready to go as soon as seven-thirty hits. So we do that, we do a monthly ourselves with our, each crew has an apparatus, they have to make sure that they're checking out that they're doing. But then we're also gonna start working with this, this maintenance gentleman mechanic, and he's gonna come in once a month and do an overview, just checking. If we can find small things before they get to be big things, that's gonna be a cost savings as well, and I think it'll expand the life of these apparatus. Next slide, please. So the goal, objective to reduce emergency response times for public safety and emergency outcomes, be building a new fire station. New fire station constructed and operational within eighteen months of project start date. Again, that would be after your six months of getting the blueprints done. I did speak with Brandsetter Carroll, one of the things that we discussed, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna lay out, in my opinion, the best place that we need to put the station, but one of the, one of the questions that was asked is, when we build the fifth station, which we're gonna have which we're going to have to, could we use the same set of plans for that? And the answer is yes. So that would be some savings on that. There will be some tweaks, but you could utilize those plans. Increasing the percentage of population within a four-minute response and then reduce the average emergency response time in the new coverage area. It's, this past, you know, a couple of years ago, I actually got to kind of see what our guys do from a different angle. My dad was sick and there was times that I had, my mom would call me and be like, hey, you need to call an ambulance. I'm like, why didn't you call ambulance? No, she called me first. So I'd call an ambulance and I'd meet them over there, but then I got to see, I got to see from a different perspective because my mind wasn't right, you know, to be able to do anything with my dad. But I got to see our people coming in there and doing what they do, right? With compassion and integrity and making sure everything was good. Same way with EMS. So what we do matters and getting there quick matters. Next slide, please. So this, and I will send you all a PDF copy or something that's a little different. I tried to make this, well, I didn't. Assistant Chief Johnson took care of this for me. I wouldn't have gotten this on here unless he got it for me. But this is, this is showing what our current four-minute response module is now. So what I want to bring to your attention is, is up here on the upper right corner, if you look at what's up in the upper right corner, well, first off, look at Pleasant Valley and look at Barclay Meadows. Okay, let's start with those. Barclay Meadows has some big houses, right? So it's outside of that four-minute response window. Pleasant Valley is outside of that four-minute response window. What's even more for the, for the, that homeowner, that's the most important thing, right? For the city and protecting its investments. The Business Park is out of the four-minute response area. Toyota is out of the four-minute response area. I know Toyota has a fire brigade, but when we show up, that's our party. We're the AHJ when we show up. And they have a, they do have a brigade that's there. They have limited resources. As far as the equipment, they have great equipment, but as far as their staffing, you know, they're there to be able to maybe catch something quick, but they're also there and they do security, they do inspections, they're doing a lot of different things. And we've worked with them and we've trained with them and they're a good group of people. But when we show up, we're the authority having jurisdiction. We've had some incidents at Toyota. We've had, we had a significant hazmat call. We've had some fires out there. And I know Mr. Menke's been, been out there, obviously, but anybody else that hasn't been at Toyota, when you go inside the gates at Toyota, it may take you five minutes to get to part of Toyota. And once you get to the front gate, you go through security, you have to be escorted in by security to go to the fire, to go to the hazmat call. So it's, it's a stretch getting out there. Again, when we talk about a problem dealing with supply chain issues, or if you're talking about something that could happen in one of these Business Park facilities that supplies Toyota, if something happens at one of those places, it could impact Toyota itself or production at Toyota. So that's one of the things that, that we really need to be looking at. And we moved our ladder truck to right here, G2. That's Station Two. It was right, I'm sorry, sir. It was right here, that's Station Three. You can see our center city is shifting that direction. This is downtown. We're shifting that direction right now. We're going to be shifting this direction with a bypass and everything that's going out that direction. Another thing to think about is Mr. Parker with schools. They're putting a new school out here, elementary school, because of the growth that's happening in this area. So there's a lot of people out in this area and they know that it's going to continue to grow. Next slide, please. This is what it looks like with the station by EMS. As you can see, it encapsulates everything that's out in that area. If the Lexus Wave Project goes through, then you're going to be able to go through and knock out these areas out here as well. Again, you're going to have some overlap if you look at the first map and second map. And again, that's a necessity because if, if Engine Two is out on a call, or Engine One's out on a call, then this is what's going to be able to come back in. We never know when, you have a single engine response, somebody's got to pick that call up. If we have a, a car wreck, you're going to have multiple units on that wreck. If you have a fire alarm or a structure fire, if we have a structure fire, it takes everything we got. We don't have anything else. We call back in, we page in, and we have people come by and they get on the reserve apparatus. And you're basically waiting for them to show up. If anything else pops out, then that's when you're going to have to utilize the county or something like that, but the county's going to have a unit at our fire too. We've had times in the last couple of months where we have helped out the county. They've had some, you know, a big fire that was out, out there and we actually had to call Lexington, Winchester, and Jessman County to come help us because we were helping them. It was just, or to help them because we had, we couldn't go out in this, in this county anymore because we were maxed out. So as you can see, what that does, it provides a better level of coverage. And then if you can still see in that area, I, I've done this before where I've put five different districts on here. I wanted to intentionally leaf that west side out, right? I'm in this area that isn't in the four-minute response. Mr. Menke, you're in this area that's in, out of the four-minute response. You may have made it barely, but that's in this as well. As the city continues to move out further that direction, you're going to see the need as well for out there. But if, I think you can see that with what we have currently, the greatest need is over by the Toyota side with Pleasant Valley, the Business Park, Toyota, all those different entities that we have. Also intentionally left Scott County Fire Department station on here. And I was going to, just want to address that real quick because that's something that typically comes up whenever we discuss station or whatever the case may be. I am tasked to be the chief of the Georgetown Fire Department. I am tasked to protect the citizens of Georgetown Fire Department and to make sure that our men and women are trained to protect the citizens of the Georgetown area. Chief Ward is a mentor of mine. He's a chief out there, he's doing a great job. I have no control over who they hire. I have no control of their equipment. I don't know what their staffing looks like that day. We are responsible to protect our community. And yes, they could potentially make it out there and if we have a fire, they're going to show up. But if we, if we look at this map and simply say, well, can't they just make it? Well, then it affects the people they're supposed to be helping when you go down to Moon Lake and, and that area. So it's all, it's, the fire service is completely different than anything else because we have to be strategic in where we place stations. And, and, and we can only do it by putting in a house and an apparatus and personnel. And it's really not necessarily a number per, I know that Chief Allgaier talked about per thousand or whatever. There are statistics out there, right? But if you look at Covington, they're right around the same area as what we have. They have five stations. It's in a small area downtown, but it's the amount of coverage that you have to have. If you look at a lot of stations, and I'll send information out to you guys, that are smaller than us with four stations, you have some that are about the same as we are with four stations, some with five stations. And some of them do have, a couple of them have fire-based EMS, but the majority of them don't. And they all have a county fire department as well. So we can work in tandem with the county, but there are, these people are our responsibility. So when we talk about the staffing, again, what this would do, this, we, we projected this could potentially save up to fifty percent. This year, we're going up to $200,000 for our overtime budget. Most of that, again, is to backfield. We call it backfields when we have to bring people back in to cover a shift. We also cover shifts if we send people out to training or whatever. We're not going to not send somebody because we can't, you know, training is what we got to do with our folks. So they're going out there, they're doing their thing, and we're making sure it's covered. When some of these large-scale events, when we went to Bowling Green, we're going to get recouped for every penny from the time they left to the time they get back, plus all the overtime it costs for us to backfield. So when we send people out, it's not necessarily, we're not doing that on City of Georgetown's dime. They're utilizing our people, but we're going to get recouped for that. And we've done that multiple times to assist. This is another big thing when it comes to hiring six people right now. It takes, it's a fourteen-week class, right? When you get out of a fourteen-week class, you're not, you're not there, right? I mean, you're, you, you're excited, you're nervous, you're getting ready to go on shift, but you're scared to death. But that just starts the process, right? Once they get out of that fourteen-week class, that first couple of years for them is very intense. Some of them may not have an EMT, so they'll have to go through EMT classes, about four months. They do SOP tests, they have to learn our SOPs, they have to go through, they have to know the street. We do a street test. So if we say, hey, go to St. Andrew's Way, they got to know where it's at, how to get there, what's the fastest route. A lot of times when we go, we don't, we're not using GPS, it's up here because we train our folks to know where they're going. And then, but it takes a long process. So here's my thought on this. If we waited until we build a station to hire twelve people, then you're looking at twelve brand-new people, starting with a brand-new district. You're going to basically have a new person on every apparatus. It takes a lot of work for that captain to focus his efforts and attention. It takes a lot of times for our operations chief to get people through, released on the engine, to get released on the truck. It takes a lot of work. So my mindset that I'm thinking is, if we can get six people this year, not only will it cut down on some overtime, it allows us to get a head start on what's inevitable. And with this station, it's going to allow us to get a couple of years under these folks' belt before we get into hiring six more people, right? Because then we would have six new folks that we could come in. We've done a six-person recruit class. Our biggest recruit, recruit class we've ever had was Chief Bruins back in '07. It was the nine people, right? We had an eight person this last time. It's, it's, that's manageable. When you get to twelve people, and that doesn't count if you had some people retire that year, you're looking, you could have a thirteen, fourteen, fifteen-person recruit class, it's just too much. So that's the mindset that we could do that. And it would allow us to, once we got done with that recruiting class, it would allow us to really hone down on the amount of overtime that we're spending. And again, that would be for the duration of when we got through with hiring the additional folks. It would be a two, probably two-year window that you would see some cost savings. All right. This is probably the part y'all been waiting for. In su, in summary, we have an excellent department. I am proud to be part of this department. I feel like my job is to work for the people that, I don't, they don't work for me, I work for them. And it's to make sure they have what they need to provide for this community. And I see each and every day the dedication that they have, the willingness to do whatever they got to do to help people in their time of need. We're a growing city. Every single year, for a couple of decades, we've been the fastest-growing city in the state, fastest-growing county in the state. It's not slowing down by any means. With Chase doing his job, now we're getting ready to, we've seen the influx of what's coming in. We're basically running five districts with three stations. And I've, I've talked about this before, but what that does, it, not only is it, is it longer response areas for these two spots, but that's what's causing so much wear and tear on our apparatus. If you had these stations in place, most, you know, most cities our size have two ladder trucks, right? So you would have the ladder that we have now, and then you would have what's called a quint. So basically it has a ladder, but it's also, it's also an engine as well, but it's a dual purpose. If you had that, then that's going to not necessarily have to have the ladder truck go from where, you know, all the way from Station Two over to Country Boy and then get a call from Country Boy to have to go out there to, to my house, right? It's all over the place. So that, that's another thing to look at. The, the ladder truck, I've talked about that, it's unreliable and, and I will never, 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 never scare our citizens. Our, we, we, we got this under control, but it's my job to tell you guys that we got to replace this thing. And my hope would be is that when we replace this thing, we would sell it as quick as we can and our backup, backup ladder truck by a, you know, a newer reserve. And we shouldn't have to use it near as much as what we do with our current reserve. If we had that going, next spring, you're looking at three brand-new engines, a new ladder truck, a new ladder reserve. So we would be in great shape. But another thing to think about though too is these are cyclical, right? You have to think about, about every ten years, you're looking at these replacements. So it, it's coming, right? Ten years from now, you're going to have the, all these things to, to work on to replace. And then the need for the additional fire station and personnel. The fire station's been in every comp plan since 2000. Two fire stations have been in comp plans since about the mid-teens. This isn't Tim Thompson standing up here and asking for a fire station, right? It's a heck of a lot easier for me not to ask for a fire station or people or two-million-dollar fire truck. This is Chief Bruin asking for it in the past. This is Chief Sagaser, Chief Coulson, Chief Wittenbarger. We've had a lot of people standing up here and asking. And it's at the point to where the longer that we wait, you know, it's expensive, you can't put a price on a life, right? So I just want to make sure that our folks get the coverage they deserve. And if we are equipped with the staffing and the stations and the apparatus, we're going to continue to be the best fire department in the state. Thank you all. Y'all have questions?
Nice presentation, Mayor.
Yeah, awesome.
Good job.
You want to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion that we take a seven-minute break.
Motion is made to make a seven-minute break? Seven-minute break, do I have a second to that? Second, do I have any questions and or comments? All those in favor of this motion to take a seven-minute break, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say nay.
Thank you.
Let the motion begin. Seven minutes. At this time, I would need a motion to resume the meeting.
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Minkie, second by Ms. Samms. Are there any further questions or comment? This meeting is now back in session. We're next going to, on the agenda, stand on D with code enforcement.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Thank you all for having us in here. Tough shoes to fill, Chief Thompson. Thank you for your good presentation. I appreciate it. I promise my presentation will not be nearly as long. It is equally as important to my office, but it won't be nearly as long. We appreciate you all giving us an opportunity to humbly present these requests to you. They are small for our office, but big for the city. If you will advance to the first slide, please. Okay, so I think in talking about code enforcement, it's important for us to highlight our inter-local funding agreement, talk a little bit about how we get our funding in our office first. So the funding for code enforcement is split between the City of Georgetown, Scott County, Sadiville, and Stampin' Ground. Forty-five percent each to the City of Georgetown and Scott County, 5% cost incurred by Sadiville, and 5% from Stampin' Ground. So when you see, as we move through this presentation, and we get towards the end, and we start talking about revenue coming in, in bulk, that's what we're talking about, is the funding from the other agencies that we support, or areas of coverage that we have. Next slide, please. Okay. So the overall goal for our office is to promote public safety, preserve property values, and just generally enhance the overall livability and appeal of Georgetown, our great little city of Georgetown, the greater area of Scott County, Sadiville, and Stampin' Ground. We take public safety seriously and put that as a priority for our office and our department. But preserving property values is key for us, too. It's good for your voting constituents, and it's good to keep Georgetown livable and nice. Next slide, please. Okay, so a little bit about what we do. You all probably have a fairly general overview of our department and what we do in terms of services, but I just wanted to highlight a few other things. So the bulk of what we do currently is a reactive approach to complaint investigations, right? So we take in complaints, as you all know, because they filter from you all and from your constituents through the mayor and back down through our office, day by day, every day. In addition to all those calls that you all push towards us, we receive probably 20 or 30 calls daily in our office with questions about code enforcement, compliance, and complaints, ranging from unsafe structures, things more serious like that, all the way down through illegal dumping and following through with overgrown lawns and cars parked on the front lawn, smaller complaints that we have to attend to as well. Beyond that, the initial investigation usually follows with property maintenance enforcement. So we are enforcing all the local ordinances related to property upkeep, such as maintaining the exterior of structures, removing junk vehicles, and addressing issues with graffiti and litter. In addition to our local code of ordinances, we have adopted with Sadiville, Stampin' Ground, and Scott County, the International Property Maintenance Codebook, 2012 edition is what we're running off of. But those are the two kind of guidebooks for our office. When we get an initial complaint, and we go, and we find an ordinance that's in violation, we then move to enforcement actions. And this is part of the administrative workload that goes with our office. So I'm, I'm trying to highlight this in a chain, kind of a chain of events, how the natural progression plays out for the code enforcement officers in our office. They take the initial complaint, they find a code violation, then they take action. Throughout this entire process, there's documentation from the initial investigation all the way through the enforcement actions, and then follow-up beyond that. So the enforcement actions include issue of violations, citations, and then abatement projects, which can range from lawn mowing to boardups, general cleanup. Some of the abatements that we take on are large-scale abatements, all the way up, following through with demolition of some properties, right? If we determine a property to be a hazard for the citizens of our community, we can follow through with the abatement and pull the property down if we need to. So beyond that, we take part in lots of community revitalization efforts. Anytime we have spare time anywhere, our code enforcement officers are actively out patrolling. They clean up a lot of the areas that Public Works and Parks are not necessarily responsible for, but yet are still a vital part of our community, including Osers Landing, the boat ramp at Cardone. Our senior code enforcement officer, Sam Waite, just cleaned up a large strip of land just beyond Osers Landing that is part of the creek embankment, kind of where the old recycling center was, behind Big Lots. So a lot of illegal dumping there. And we do that through collaborative efforts with Chief Bruin and his work crews go out and help us. Our senior code enforcement officer typically notifies them when he identifies an area that needs to be cleaned up. Public Works is called into action here in town. They go out with us and clean up the property, and we make everything nice and neat and tidy, and then we move on about our day. A lot of these, a lot of these revitalization efforts kind of go unseen. It's one of those things where you don't notice the problem if there's not a problem, if we've taken care of it, right? And that's kind of how we like to function in our office. In addition to collaboration with Public Works, we also collaborate with building inspection and the fire department, the prevention bureau. So our office is situated at West Clinton. We have building inspection, electrical inspection on the first floor of our office. And then, under my umbrella, is the fire inspector and the fire marshal, right? So collectively, we all work together to enforce the codes of our city and keep our nice city safe, right? Okay. Next slide, please. Okay, so this slide highlights revenue that comes into our department. We are a service agency as well. However, this shows our inter-local revenues that we have, and a small amount of fines that are attributed to our enforcement actions throughout the year, year by year. You can see that projected for next year, we think we'll bring in about $25,000 in fines. Inter-local revenue is projected to be $352,500. And our total revenues for the year are projected to be $377,508,000. And that's on the handout that you all have. I know this is fairly small font for a PowerPoint, but we're trying to squeeze all the information in there at one time for you. So that's our revenue for the year, projected. You can see our revenue for 2024, actual, $212,000 there, steadily increases with our call volume that also steadily increases throughout the year. We're looking at a call volume increase of about 10% year-over-year, every year, with the growth of the city. And we'll talk about that a little bit later. Next slide, please. Okay. So here, we're talking about the expenditures of our office. Our projected expenditures next year, including salaries, benefits, contractual services, materials and supplies, and capital outlay, which is not as big for us as the entire fire department, our total expenses that we're looking at are $640,923. Now, what that includes, there is a jump of about $260,000 there. And that includes a request that I have for you all for two additional code enforcement officers. We'll talk about that when we get to the staffing slide, and I'll go back down through here and show you where we're at and where we hope to be going in the future. Next slide, please. Okay. So this is our current staffing model. I've included myself on here, the Assistant Chief of Prevention, also hold the office of the Director of Code Enforcement as well. So you saw my position show up in Chief Thompson's slides when he had his organizational chart. I'm also listed out on here on this one. So from 2016, you saw from Chief Thompson's slideshow, 2016, 2017, when the code enforcement office came under the umbrella of the fire department, the fire marshal had assumed the role of Director of Code Enforcement. I've got it listed out on here as the Assistant Chief of Prevention. There was some overlap in there. Our, my current position was pulled out of this office in 2021. So one director, Assistant Chief of Fire Prevention, which is the Director of Code Enforcement. Senior Code Enforcement Officer was added. Again, this was not an additional personnel that we added to our staffing. It was a title change and a job description change that we had for our most senior code enforcement officer, Sam Waite. So we moved him to a position where he's gonna be doing more tracking, more training, more data entry, also still responding to all these calls that are coming in. Title change for him, no additional staff requests there. We have a half-day administrative assistant, which she really, really keeps us moving, keeps us going, keeps us on the right path in our office. She was brought on in 2017, is that correct, Chief Thompson? 2017. So with the addition of her, we were able to kind of streamline some of our processes in the office, maintain documentation, and maintain an appropriate response model, and kind of triage some of these responses as they come in, as the phone calls flood into our office. The additional code enforcement officers are listed out here. So you'll see throughout, from 2016 through 2023, we had two code enforcement officers. We still only have two in the office. One of them is now a senior code enforcement officer, plus one code enforcement officer that we have. The additional staffing that we're asking for next year is two code enforcement officers. That brings our total code enforcement officers to three. With the senior code enforcement officer, that's four people that are able to respond to Georgetown, Scott County, Sadiville, and Stampin' Ground. So four, four code enforcement officers that you'll have responding to about 300 square miles, and on top of the almost 40,000 citizens that live in Georgetown, all of Sadiville, Stampin' Ground, and Scott County, which is about 60,000 people. So all of the growth, all of the things that Chief Thompson highlighted, affect all of our departments, right?
Mayor, may I ask him?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I think I probably know the answer to this, but of those areas that you service, who has the most code enforcement call-outs?
So in terms of sheer volume, it is the City of Georgetown, right? And what we hope to do with this staffing model, and I will talk about that a little bit later, too, but what we hope to do is to place two code enforcement officers in the City of Georgetown that are responding in our area, primarily two calls coming in for us. Have one that's dedicated Sadiville, Stampin' Ground, Scott County, that can make those outline calls, and then the senior code enforcement officer picks and chooses the most complicated cases for the day and attends to those, in addition to monitoring and maintaining all of the abatement calls that come in, and training those two new officers. So in terms of training for the code enforcement officer, not nearly as extensive as it is for firefighters. It's more of an experience-based training thing. We have a small training program that we have in place now, and we expect it to take about six months to get these officers trained up to where they are independently effective of one another, and they're independent operators moving out on their own, right? So six-month timeline there, but we feel like this model will allow us to effectively cover all of our coverage area and not have any gaps in service at all. Did that answer your question?
It does.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have any questions about the staffing model in our office?
I have a question, just for clarification. I think I know the answer, but you're asking, you're under the city, but we get interlocal, we get half, half of the expenses and salary are shared with the county?
Yes.
Okay, just making sure.
So those members of the community, equally as important as this is Georgetown, while the call volume is not as high, when they have an issue in their communities, they are expecting us to respond, the same as the rest of your all's constituents here in town, right? So it's part of a responsibility of our office to maintain coverage for all of those areas. And we, we do our best to equally distribute our services and attention to all of the areas. Any other, did you have a question, Mr. Minkie?
Yeah, but keep going.
Okay, okay. All right. So next slide, please. Okay. So this is our current code volume. And what this is, this is from the data that I'm able to extract from our reporting system that we have. These are actual calls that we have made where there was a notice of violation that was put in place, oftentimes following through to abatement, but it's the single first individual call that's on here. We estimated that we're responding to these properties at least four times for these calls, right? Because you have the initial, where you're going out, making the initial assessment, documentation that goes with that. Then there is a reassessment that goes along with the notice of violation, right? We're going back out again. We're checking on that to make sure if there was no progress, maybe on that, a citation is issued out. And then beyond that five-day mark, we're going back out again to reassess the property. And at that point in time, we choose whether or not we're gonna move into abatement, where we're actually taking care of the property and bringing it up to our standard. So minimum of four times, oftentimes many more, back and forth. But what you're missing on here are the service calls where we go out, and our code enforcement officer is able to knock on the door and make contact with somebody, and they say, "Hey, your neighbors have some complaints about your grass being too tall," or "We have a code violation with your vehicle being parked on the front lawn." We provide some education and some guidance to them. They give us the thumbs up and say, "I'm gonna take care of this in the next day or two." Our code enforcement officers make us an assessment at that point in time and say, "Okay, I feel like they're gonna follow through with this." We come back out, make sure that the problem was attended to, and then we move on. So there was no documentation that's in here. So, there was no documentation that's in here. We are going to address that so that we have more documentation for everything that we do in our office, and I will talk about how we're going to do that later. Does anybody have any questions about our volume of calls? No? Okay. You can see that year over year, it's about a 10% increase. We project that to happen again this next year and continuing on with population growth here in the town, right? So, as more, more businesses move in, as more of our land is developed, and more, and more neighborhoods move in here, more code violations crop up, and we are attending to them, just like the Fire Department is attending to emergency response calls.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
So, I think you said that you have 30 to 40 calls a day. And how many of those can you take care of in any given day?
So, some of those calls are handled in the office with education, guidance, right? Some of the calls are added to a list of things that we need to attend to, and they're triaged throughout the day, right? From the most egregious to the least egregious, and we're driving around. And then as that, as the average diminishes, right, or as the calls diminish and we get more time, then we're going out and we're checking on these other calls, right? So, when you're talking about two Code Enforcement Officers that are attending to the entire county-wide area, something has to give in there, right? And we do our best to take care of the most egregious issues and keep everybody on a running list and attend to them as we get the calls in. So, that's how we're handling that.
Yeah.
Okay. Next slide, please. All right. We're getting closer to the end. So, strengths of our office, expertise and knowledge. Our Senior Code Enforcement Officer has been with the city of Georgetown as a Code Enforcement Officer for six years now. He's been doing this for a long time. Prior to that, he was a firefighter with the city of Georgetown. His partner, who is a new hire with us that filled a vacant spot in the Code Enforcement Office, is also a former firefighter, brings with him 20 years of experience with the city. Pretty vast knowledge of fire code and a good working knowledge of city code of ordinances, right? So, as firefighters, we're aware of a lot of the ordinances relating to safety issues that couple with Code Enforcement Office. So, he's been a big asset for us. We're happy to have him with us. But their expertise and knowledge is definitely one of our strengths. Building public trust is a strength that they have. Every day, we get people to call in that are happy with the services that we've provided, right? They sing nothing but praise for our Senior Code Enforcement Officer, Sam Waite. Obviously, if you're on the receiving end of one of these violations, you're not always super pleased, but we do our best to keep everybody happy. And, you know, we work together as a community to be a better place. Community engagement is one of our strengths, right? Every time that we get a call in our office and we're able to engage with the community, go out, make their smaller neighborhoods a better place to live, I think it's good for all of us, right? Partnership with other departments. We, in the Code Enforcement Office, work, like I said before, with Chief Bruin and Public Works. We oftentimes are going out with the Police Department, frequently calls us to go out for code violations. But we're working together with all the other departments within the city at all times, and we work well with them. I think we've got a very good team, got a very good group of leaders for our team. And I enjoy what we do and I enjoy working with these other departments. But I feel like we're very effective when we work together. We'll move over to some of the weaknesses that we have, right? Obviously, lack of resources, lack of personnel is a weakness for our department, right? Like I said, we've only got the two Code Enforcement Officers for that big, large area. Again, 300 square miles, give or take, I think it's about 282, to be exact, and 57,000 population for the entire county. So, and that is only projected to increase next year and for the next 10 years and for the foreseeable future. We take a very reactive approach in our office because of lack of resources, lack of personnel, right? We're just responding to calls, putting out spot fires, if you will, doing the best that we can. I think that if we had more personnel in our office, we would be able to do a lot in terms of prevention, a lot in terms of getting ahead of some of these problems, right? Providing some educational material to our members of our community, kind of cutting some of this stuff off at the path. Our Fire Prevention Office has been very, very successful in our prevention program. We have seen, as a nation, fires decrease since the late 70s when we started prevention programs in the fire service. I think that this could go a lot in terms of Code Enforcement. Another weakness that we have, like I highlighted before, is a lack of really defined coverage areas for Code Enforcement. So, Fire Department kind of districted out. We know when we go into work what area we're servicing. I would like to create something similar to that in our Office of Code Enforcement so that we have two officers that are dedicated to one generalized area that are able to continue on and provide some continuity of service in some of these calls. They'll be able to identify problem areas, right? Start to proactively target some of these areas and push out some resource materials to them. Beyond that, it'll allow us to dedicate Code Enforcement Officers to our broader area of coverage, including Scott County, Sadieville, and Stampin' Ground. Opportunities for us include new technology. The Fire Department is moving towards changing our reporting software this year, moving from kind of an outdated set of software to a new set of software. And that's in the works for us. Along with that, we have discussed with the software designers, and they are creating a layer of reporting in that software so that the Office of Code Enforcement can continue to track our runs and document our runs within that software. It'll allow us all to have access to those runs and allow me to do some better data tracking in our office. Community education. The data tracking will help with some of that, right? We find out that we have certain problem areas within the community, be able to push out targeted information to them. We hope to come up with some brochures, some flyers, some door hangers, most common Code Enforcement violations, hang those out. This was suggested by Mr. Crisp the other night at the Fire Prevention, or Fire Committee meeting. We, I assured him that we already have that in the works. The previous two Directors of Code Enforcement, that was something that they wanted to work towards too, right? So, there's continuing theme here. We all know that we need some more people. We all know some of these extra things we should be doing, and we're trying to get to that point. For us, we hope to have a vacant property review board stood up within this year, and that will be part of our Code Enforcement, Code Enforcement Board. They, we are going to ask them to help us develop a program for this vacant property review board. This is something that they have in many other communities that are our size and larger communities as well. I think it's something that'll be good for us and help us track some of the vacant property throughout the city and at least make it accessible to our office, right? If we have it tracking and we're watching it. We are leaders in our community, leaders in our region in terms of Code Enforcement. When Chief Thompson became the Director of Code Enforcement when they came under our umbrella at the Fire Department, he went to a conference in Paducah. Their model was the same as ours, right? Code Enforcement was under the Fire Department. He saw what they were doing, liked what they were doing, liked how they ran things like their model. We adopted that here and started doing some of the things. I feel like we do it even bigger and better than that now, personally. We've gotten some experience under our belts in running Code Enforcement. I feel like we do a good job with it, and I think it shows in that many of the communities around us, Paris, Bourbon County, Greater Bourbon County, they reached out to us recently, asked us to come speak to them, talk to them about our model for Code Enforcement, and they're starting to make the push towards bringing Code Enforcement under the Fire Department, following along with our same model. They like the way it works, and it seemed to be effective to them. And I think they're going to move in that direction too. So, we're kind of leading the people around us with what we do. So, we're doing a good job. You all have done a good job providing resources to us for the last six years since we've been under the Fire Department. I can't speak for before that because I don't know, but I feel like you probably did. And we're proud of what we do here. Upcoming threats, rapid community development, right? It's a threat for all of us. We're growing faster than we can support the infrastructure in our community, and that's a thing in our office. Little bit of rural community resistance, you know? When I was a kid here in the 80s in Scott County, we were a largely rural farming community, right? People still raised tobacco, people had horses, people had cattle, sheep, all the farming was done here. There was a lot of space in between all of our houses, in between all of our neighborhoods. Some of the older neighborhoods in town were unique in that they were neighborhoods, right? We didn't have that in the majority of the county. We're spotted with all these vast neighborhoods now that we didn't have then. And as we move closer together, your neighbors' problems become your problems, right? So, back in the 80s, if you had a washing machine that was sitting out beside your barn, it was okay. Today, when you have a washing machine that's sitting out in front of your garage for several days, several weeks, it becomes an issue for your neighbors, becomes an issue for the HOA. So, those are some of the threats that we are facing now. And I think that education goes a long way in alleviating some of those threats. But an additional threat for us, just like at the Fire Department, takes a couple of years to develop a firefighter that is completely independent and can operate on his own on the fire ground. Same thing with the Code Enforcement Officer. We hired two new Code Enforcement Officers now. We're six months from the point where they will be functioning independent of our Senior Code Enforcement Officer and my oversight, right? I have some goals and objectives on the next slide. I will cover them very quickly, and then I promise I will be closing out. Okay. So, these are the goals, right? This is our, kind of our solution to some of the problems that we threw out there. Personnel Development Plan. I am working towards developing a Personnel Development Plan within our SOPs, which will serve as a guideline for this office going forward into the foreseeable future. It will allow us to structure out a certificate training program, structure out how we document all of our responses that we make, change some of our model in terms of abatement. What we hope to do in our office is to take on the abatement outside of the city. So, currently, any abatement project that we have within the city is handled by Chief Bruin and Public Works. Our model for abatements now in the county areas, Sadieville and Stampin' Ground, we used to bid those out, right? So, we had an annual contract that went out for bid. Different companies would bid on this, mowing companies, cleanup crews, they bid on it. We had a contract that was provided to them for the year. And then when we had an abatement that needed to take place in the county, our Director of Code Enforcement would call them up and say, "Hey, this property needs to be mowed." "Hey, we need a general cleanup at this property." In our office now, we are going to take that on. I've taken $25,000 that I deducted from our abatement line item. We expect that to be an initial cost reduction for us in terms of taking on the abatements with our Code Enforcement Officers. So, in addition to the responses that they're making to the code violation calls, they're going to be going out and taking care of the abatement for us too. And I think this is something that we can realistically handle in our office. Our other goal is to increase the staffing, right, by two. We hope to make that happen in this first year. That will prevent any gaps in services that we provide. We also have a goal of assuming a more proactive approach in terms of response. The objective there is going to be community education. That's what we're going to start with. We will accomplish that within the first year. We'll accomplish that whether you give us two additional Code Enforcement Officers or not. It certainly will make it much more easier to distribute this information if we have that help, though, in our new software implementation, which will happen in the fourth quarter of 2025. Does anybody have any questions for me? No?
No questions?
Thank you all very much for your time. I appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you. Well presented.
Moving right along. We now have Public Works, and then we, and then we got Engineering. So, Chief, Mr. Bruin?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'll try to go quicker. No, I will. Let's start off. Everybody knows what Public Works is, so... Our divisions are Streets and Roads, Stormwater, Beautification, our downtown Main Street area. We take care of that and Streets and Signs. Next slide. Our sources of funding, of course, is our general revenue, and then we have two others, and you'll see on a slide on down the road, the scrap metal sales. What that is, the stuff, you know, storm grates that get broken, can't use no more. We'll keep them and take them to scrap metal. People might pick that dishwasher that left beside the barn. They'll bring it out and throw it on the side of the road, and we'll have to go get it. So, we do recoup a little money on scrap metal over here. It's not a lot. We don't even project it out. We just, it's something we get. And then, the demolition and abatement fees that we charge Code Enforcement. And the way we charge those is, we've got a sheet, kind of similar to FEMA, what we charge a piece of equipment, what we charge from Empire, and then whatever we use if we turn down a house or we're mowing a field, whatever we use to do that, we will bill Code Enforcement. And sometimes they recoup the money, and sometimes I guess they have to put liens on properties and stuff. Next slide. Of course, our services, Streets and Roads is snow removal, potholes. We do some small patchwork. We don't do the blacktopping. Eddie's crew takes, gets, takes care of that. Of course, curb repair, street signs, of course, we replace old signs. We just about finished with the stop signs, and now we're going to be starting on some other, no parking signs. I know you've seen several of those around town. It's something we'll be working on. Mowing, we got approximately 58 properties that we mow, and they range from very small areas to a 60-acre landfill on Sims Road. So, about six, seven months out of the year, we do a lot of mowing. Of course, we pick up the yard waste removal. That's leaves, landscaping, and brush that the citizens will set out. We did not pick up anything. It's bagged, but we do do that still. Storm sewer repair and cleanouts. We work with Eddie, and he'll talk about that some later, doing that. If there's a small, we do a lot of reactive stuff. Hole in the street or the stormwater, things that rolled in underneath, we go and take care of it, if we can. Some jobs, like the Walmart job where that collapsed, that's just way too big for us. That's when Eddie has to hire somebody. We also, after ever-heavy rain, or any kind of rain, you know, an inch or two, we go out and we'll clean out where the inlets go in and out, because debris gets piled up. If you've ever come by Clayton and South Broadway, you'll see how that piles up and gets them. Downtown, those, the streetlights downtown from Water Street to Mulberry, we take care of those lights. KU does not replace those, so we have to take care of those. So, we do all the downtown. We put up the banners for Lori, decorations during Christmas, the flowers in the summer. The only thing we don't do on the flowers is, of course, we don't grow them and we don't water them. I think they've got a contract. We'll buy water for that. City buildings, we do minor repairs and maintenance. We've worked, you know, any of the departments tell you, they'll call us, we'll do what we can to fix it. And then, of course, we talked about that, city Code Enforcement. We mow demo structures, nuisance trash collection, and board up unsafe buildings. And then we do all the maintenance and staffing for the festival and council-approved events. Next slide, revenue. Of course, that's the slide we was talking about earlier on, the revenues. Like I said, we do not do any projecting because we don't know till we get it. So, if you've got any questions about that, I'll be happy to answer them best I can, but there's not a lot to see right there. Next slide. And then, of course, this goes back... And then, of course, this goes back, I'm on the wrong page. This is our expenditures going back to 2023. And you can see the only, we haven't went up a lot, we have went up a little bit. The real difference is in 2022, it was a little higher because that was the year we quit sanitation. So we still had some extra people and that's why they're a little bit higher. Next slide. Same thing with staffing, you can see in 2020 here, we had 33 and we're down. Our goal was, and city council approved this, with the sanitation thing, was to get down to 26. And we are at that, we've finally through, people retiring or quitting. We're down to the 26th number. Next slide. Our strengths and weaknesses and opportunities and threats are not going to be much different than a lot of departments, but we'll go over them. We do have, we do have some very skilled employees, they're dedicated workers and they're capable of doing a variety of jobs. We do work well with other agencies and departments in the city and the county. JR at the Road Department will work well with him. If he needs something, he'll call me. If he's got something that I need, he'll come and help us. So we do work well with the other departments. And we are responsive to our public concerns and complaints. We try to answer all our phone calls as soon as possible and take care of any problem that we can. Some weaknesses we have, some of the budget availability to provide more training for our personnel. We need to do some more training for our personnel, and I'll talk about it later a little bit because we've got some guys that are getting older and could retire. And there are a lot of our equipment operators and stuff like that. And you just can't, you've got to be trained on that heavy equipment. You just can't throw someone on it to do it. Another weakness we got is formal work orders. We'll send out a paperwork order, and this is something that I've talked to several vendors about, is getting some kind of way of tracking better so we know what we're, we can report to you what we're doing. But it is a weakness we got and we've got to work on it. Some of our equipment and infrastructure is aging and it's, you know, it's getting toward the end of life. Do appreciate the mayor and council for taking care of our equipment needs when can, but, you know, we're still getting there and we're still working on it. We do need more staffing levels to address the stormwater maintenance needs. And like I said earlier, we're a lot of, we're reactive to, we've got a problem that we got to go fix. You know, helping Eddie and doing some of the cleaning out and when he has the crew camera, we will need future staffing for that. Some of the opportunities we've got, and it's been talked a lot about, is the stormwater utility fee. That would allow for proactive maintenance rather than reactive. I think the city ought to think about in the future down the road is create a position that can handle the city-owned buildings for maintenance. Right now, we'll fix what we can, but if we need a plumber or electrician, and we've got vendors that we work well with us. But as we keep growing, we're going to need a position like that in the city to take care of all the building. You've got the police department, you've got fire departments, you know, and they're all getting some age on them now. So it's something we might look at down the road. And then introduce a formal work order tracking system to better capture our department output and efficiency. And like I said, that's something I'm working on. Threats, of course, rapid growth, our infrastructure is aging. I know I've been around long enough to know that, you know, I still think the Colony is a new subdivision, but it's been there since the eighties. You know, so it is getting older, our parts of our town are getting older. Succession issues and supervisory roles, what I need there is, you know, Frank and I are getting older. So we're going to start to develop people that will take our place in the future. And then severe weather events. Next slide. Some of our goals and objectives are to improve our training and this is to provide increased training opportunities. Right now, we do a lot of the city require training, you know, drug training, some of the stuff that Megan's department asks us to do. But I would like to do a little bit more. Some of it does cost, we don't have a huge training budget, but some of it, we have worked with the Horse Park and other agencies, UK, to do some training that's, you know, almost free of charge. So that's something we're working on. And then to improve the work order process, and this is stuff we're all, we're working on now. And that's to better track our work orders down the road. And then, next slide. Our first goal, increase department training hours. We're hoping to complete 25% in the upcoming year, more than what we're doing. And then research the tracking software and select ones that fit our department and implement it.
Mayor, I have a question.
That's all I got. Anybody have any questions?
Okay, Ms. Hambrik.
Is it just the county that uses some of the incarcerated individuals to do some public works? Or do we do that?
Well, he does, he does it, I know Parks does. I don't know if JR's crew does or if it's through the parks.
I've been seeing a lot of the road cleanup.
Housing Authority do that. I do know that the, his trash pickup for the inmates, he does that. But the county also hires a company a couple of times a year to come in and pick up the trash before they start the summer mowing. Because we've helped them pick that up, pick the bags up, they'll leave them on the side of the road. So some of that is the jail and some of it is companies with the mowing service.
Okay, but it doesn't really affect your department?
No, no, we pick up trash too. We did, used to use the inmate labor some back before COVID. But we, my budget was cut and that money was never put back in there.
Okay.
So that's why we don't use that.
All right, thank you, sir.
Well? Any other questions?
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we got City Engineering.
Thank you all. Thank you Devon and Stacy for all your help putting this together. Appreciate your time. This is very much, very closely related to what Robert just talked about with the few spins. We're in the same department and dovetail on a lot of the same types of projects. So first slide is the sources of funding. It's general revenue, it's a big chunk. And then the KYTC municipal road funds, the MAP funds and the LGA funds, that comes from the state gasoline tax. And we get a percentage of that along in the county, it's a chunk too. We get a little bit of money for the sidewalk 50-50 cost-sharing program. That's more of an incentive program to encourage people to repair sidewalks that are damaged and trip hazards, we're trying to eliminate those. We also taken a little bit of money from street cut encroachment permits. That's primarily from utility companies, gas company, water companies, who are installing gas mains or water lines under the road and how they have to put the pavement back and that sort of thing. We do get a little bit of fees from that. And we also have rain barrels if anybody wants a rain barrel, they're for sale. The next slide, please. This is an overview of the services that we provide. The first one is under stormwater, it's the MS4 program. You've, you'll have all heard a lot about that. That is a state mandated program for municipalities. We are a tier two. The larger cities, Louisville and Lexington are tier ones. And they outline a program, programs that we have to follow. We have to report back to them and we have to make sure that we're doing everything that's in compliance with our permit. It's six MCMs, and these are measurable goals for stormwater. One is public education and outreach. We do, we do classroom training in schools about stormwater environmental issues, that sort of thing. We also have public involvement programs where we reach out to the general public to, it's an educational program that we try to get people to focus on environmental issues and stormwater, specifically stormwater and managing of stormwater. We also do an illicit discharge and detection program. That is things that spills and things of that nature that can happen at industries or at individual homes. And we, we have a process where we go through, we can levy, you know, levy certain sanctions on them and encourage them to clean up, clean up the problems that have happened. A big one, probably, probably the biggest one is the, the fourth one, the MCM4 is the construction site runoff control. That's a huge effort and a program where you see the silt fences, the black fences that surround the perimeter of construction sites, that's a big, that's to capture and contain any kind of runoff, stormwater runoff while the sites, you know, doesn't have any grass on it. It's all, it's all soil and keeping it from running off into the creeks. That's a big, big effort and a big source of pollution. Then post-construction, after, after, that's another program where we maintain water quality units, maintain ditches, maintain piping, anything that's stormwater channeling, curbing gutter, we, that falls under that heading. And then pollution prevention and good housekeeping, that is primarily geared towards compliance activities and training of people and bringing awareness to the importance of, you know, keeping things clean and in order. We also do stormwater asset management where we are, we look at all the assets that we have and the age of them and expected condition and try to pinpoint areas that are going to need significant rehab over the foreseeable future. That's, that's what we do with that program. And then the stormwater management agreement, that's becoming bigger and bigger. We have about 40 of those in place, 40 to 45 of those. And they're held by either HOAs or by individual businesses and industries. And they're required, they sign an agreement, they're required to maintain their infrastructure, maintain their, mainly their storm basins where the water's held, make sure they're mowed and in good working order, cleaned out, pipes. So they have to do an inspection once a year and we track those. That program started 2018, so it's relatively new and really becoming, you know, a bigger part of the things that we, we take care of. So the next category is the Streets and Roads and Rights of Way. And we do street and road asset management where we're analyzing the condition of overall streets and looking for streets that need to be repaired or overlaid or milled and paved. That's part of the street paving program, the next one on there. And then we also are doing sidewalk asset management. We're required to, once a year, to check sidewalks and check the condition of them. And we do that, and that's where the 50-50 program came in. Then we also do the street cuts, they come to us, utility companies and individual property owners from time to time when they maybe want to expand their driveway or do something like that, they need to, they need to get a permit, and so we handle those permits. We also, traffic committee is also a big task that we, we're tasked with and we meet once a month. And two council people are on the committee. We talk about parking and speeding and public right-of-way issues. Try to come up with, try to address them and take action where it's appropriate in that committee. So anytime there's a call or complaint, we generally put it on the agenda and try to bring it before the, before the whole body. And it's got a cross-section of police and fire and city council and planning and zoning and a number of people sit on that committee. Other activities is new development assistance and review. I sit on the TRC committee, that's, meets once a month with planning and zoning, where new developments, they present their plans to a cross-section of people. We provide them feedback on the new developments that are, that are going to be happening over the, over the next years. And then city capital project management. I help a lot with some of the larger projects, the road projects, the stormwater projects, managing those projects during construction. And also, we assist a lot of the other departments with, if they have a project they want to get done, we might help them write the specs and get it out to bid, those sorts of things. We'll help them with those tasks. City beautification and then public engagement and education is the other major tasks that we have. Next slide, please. These are revenues, as I mentioned, it's primarily the MAP funds on this one. It's broken into two, two parts. One is general engineering, that's the streets and roads, and then stormwater is the other one. So I've got, I've got the revenues and broken down into each group. So again, the main thing is the MAP funds and the LGA funds. That's the big, that's the state money that we get to resurface streets. Next, next slide. Under stormwater revenues, primarily the general fund, it makes up the bulk of it. And then we get a little bit of money from raid and barrel sales, but that's primarily a program to, that people who are environmentally conscious can, you know, participate in that program, so. The next slide is the expenditures. Again, we broke general engineering and stormwater. And so these are our major expenditure categories, contractual, materials and supplies, capital, MAP funding and LGA funding. Those are our, that's where, that's where the tax dollars go, is towards those programs. And the next slide is the stormwater expenditures. And in there, we've got salaries and benefits and also contractual services, materials and then capital outlays that we do for stormwater projects. And the next slide is the staffing. It's just two of us, myself as a city engineer, and then I have an engineering technician that takes a lot of work. I give him a lot of work to do, so he helps me quite a lot. But really, I'm within Public Works and everybody in that department helps. We are all a team on different tasks that we, that we find. The next slide, please. Okay, so this is the, some service data. These are the number of encroachment permits that we've issued. Issue around 30 to 36, 30 to 25. Around 30 to 35 every year, we, we're, those are the permits that they come to us and want to do some kind of work within the street right-of-way. And so they, we, we go over the project, we make sure they have insurance, they're bonding, and then we issue them the permit and they do the work and they just make sure, then we do a final inspection and make sure it's all put back the way it was when they, before they got there. Stormwater BNP agreements, we have a number of those. I mentioned we have about 40, they're divided into commercial and residential. We expect that to continue to grow. And again, that didn't start until 2018. So anything predating 2018 does not have an agreement in place. And so our ability to, if we have a problem to enforce something is limited because we don't have, we don't have an agreement in place in writing that's filed in the courthouse along with the property that outlines the tasks that they're supposed to do to maintain their infrastructure. Then city streets miles, where last year we paved about four miles, million paving, that was what the money we had available to do. I'll get into a little bit about really what we need to be doing more than that to maintain our, maintain our streets the way that they're expected to be maintained. So the strengths and weaknesses and opportunities and threats. This is very similar to what Robert had. I think our strengths are our responsiveness to citizen calls. We take them very seriously. The problems they have are, are very important to them and to, they're important to us that we follow through with the work tasks. So we, we listen to what, what their problems are and we try to follow through and get some kind of action done. We feel that those are our strengths. We do a really good job with our MS4 program. We always get good feedback from the state. We turn in an annual reports and we also get audited occasionally. We always have very positive feedback from them. I think we're, we do a good job with project management and, and keeping things on task. Even though we're small and limited in our size, we, with what we've got, I think we do very well. We have a positive relationship and strong engagement with the development community. We try to work with them to, to get better things in place. Some of our weaknesses, probably street parking and traffic in some of the older established neighborhoods that don't have traffic calming measures built into the roads. And we have issues and we're, we're, we're trying to identify some projects to address some of that in some areas. We have budget constraints like, like every department does and it limits our ability to be proactive rather than, or we're more reactive rather than proactive. That's, that would be a weakness that we identified. We have budget constraints for street and road paving projects, stormwater infrastructure and maintenance, et cetera. So we, we have an adequate budget, but we could always be doing more and we would like to be doing more. Staffing level, levels and a limited time for additional training. We're, we're reacting to things, so we don't have a lot of time to, to do training, which is something that we need to do a better job on. Some of the opportunities that in the future would, would be a stormwater utility fee. We've talked a lot about that and y'all are well aware of that. Pursuing additional grant funding, that's, that's an opportunity that we're going to try to step up now that we, especially now that we have a grant administrator who can help with that a lot. Having some additional staff, probably another person under me would, would be very helpful in the future. We're not asking for it now, but in the future to help with the volume that we've got of requests and things that we need to be doing. Probably need to work on our order tracking processes where we can better report back to you all, all of the things that we do and all the phone calls that we take. And right now we, we track major items, but we get a lot of calls that we don't track and we, we probably should do a better job with that. Think an opportunity is to maintain strong relationships with consultants and contractors. We, we need to lean on them more to take, take a larger role in some of the day-to-day tasks, project management kind of roles. So we're looking at that as an opportunity. Some of the threats is the growth. It's, it's really hard to keep on top of all the growth sometimes. We have MAP funding limitations. The state gives us between 700 and 800,000 a year to pave streets and that's, it's not a whole lot when you consider 150 miles of streets that we have to maintain. We have, you know, significant weather events. The downtown stormwater system has some issues that we were trying to address. And as I mentioned before, stormwater drainage basins in areas without a stormwater maintenance agreement in place. And some of those are, have not been maintained over the years and we, that is a threat because those are some things that we, there's going to have to be a lot of maintenance type of work done on, on some of those. Next slide, please. So some goals and objectives that we identified is to improve department record-keeping, especially tracking the phone calls, phone logs. And also making sure that, that action items get, get addressed in a timely manner. So we're working on that as an immediate goal to, to, to do a better job there. To ma, another goal is to maintain city streets and roads more effectively. And that means to schedule a paving and fund for a 20, 20-year pavement life, life cycle. So what that means is you expect a, a good paving job to last 20 years on average. And so you have to, you have to resurface that many streets to maintain that, that, that 20-year cycle. And then increase and improve stormwater maintenance. And what that means is identifying the older areas, or not really old, but, but aging areas that are very likely to have piping issues and stormwater basin issues. And doing more camera work to identify more longer-term capital projects rather than just waiting for a failure somewhere and then addressing that. So it's a three to five-year window for that one. The next one is, next slide, please. So some performance measures that, that again, to, to do a better job on tracking communications, a better phone call tracking system to make sure that we can both report to you all and to the state, especially on stormwater, and then you all have a better understanding of, that we're following through with, with things that the public is asking us to do. The resurfacing, the, the seven, we, we really needed it. We do four miles, we need to do seven and a half, which is roughly doubling the, the pavement amount. So that's, that's a, that's a goal, goal number two. And then goal number three would be to implement a stormwater utility fee to address capital needs and allow for, for additional crew and cover the costs for additional crew members and equipment and general maintenance. And that is all my presentation for city engineer. If y'all have any questions.
First, I want to let you know that you all have, you know, what you all got have done a fantastic job. I'm glad to see that you all, something in common with, with, with the public works that you are now going to be able to track, try to track any. I do know that you all have some small jobs that you get that you probably don't even, you know, that I call you up on or somebody calls you up on, that, you know, if, if, if we're able to know what those little jobs that y'all do. So we can get a big picture, so everybody know just how much you all do. That really is not, we, we see the big picture, but a lot of the smaller things they don't see. Maybe the council can get a little bit more on that. But, and now to you, chief, thank you. Chief, thank you. You know, I see the other half of Johnson Johnson is left, so. But anyway, but I appreciate the, the effort. I appreciate the time you all put into this and to present this to this council because it's a lot of good information because decisions go have to be made. And it's, when we can get information in front of this council, we can, we can make the best decision going forward. So for that, I appreciate you all and thank you all so much.
Thank you very much for that. Thank you all.
Next is the council committee reports and public works. You're going to punt, you're going to punt to, you're going to punt to Sanja. Okay, so, all right. So we'll do that on the next, next meeting. And then we have fire.
We just heard the fire report. We got a, a, an introduction at our last meeting and it was pretty much mirrored tonight, so.
That's good. All right, next, we have finance.
Thank you, mayor.
All right.
We had our regularly scheduled finance committee meeting on April 21st, 2025. The mayor, myself and Tammy Losavie Mitchell were in attendance as well as the mayor's staff. We approved the minutes from the April 14th, 2025 meeting. And tonight on the agenda to come will be the Stockyards Bank Investment Proposal. We, we have a, a CD coming, coming maturing April, at the end of this month that we will hear tonight and that will probably, that will be for a 12-month rate. Item number four, we had the 2025, 26 budget discussions and we talked mainly about capital request and architectural design for, for dispatch and police department, the fire department, you know, requesting a new ladder truck and other various items of heavy equipment for the public works department were also discussed. There was no general's discussion and we adjourned at 9:20 a.m.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hampton. Next on the agenda, item number nine, first reading for the annexation ordinance, 1367, Payne's Depot Road, sponsor Sanja Wilkins Grant. And I'm going to let, and we.
So I'm actually going to pass it off to Elise and Holden and we do have legal counsel and representative from the developer here, but we're just going to do just a general kind of project. Here's what the project is that is driving the need for the annexation, which does stem from a zone change request. So two different items that we're talking about, first reading for the annexation ordinance, which is driven by the property owner's consent. This was a condition of approval for the zone change request that has been referred to you all and we will do a first reading on that following the annexation discussion. So passing it off.
Mayor, council members, before we get started, I'd just like to give just a, a little bit of background around this project. It seems like, as was brought up a couple of times, we see an incredible amount of growth coming into our community. And as a part of that, we get a lot of opportunity to work on policies and procedures associated with this type of development. In the past, there's been questions about what comes first, annexation or the zone change. So I think we've listened to the council's feedback on this and so we're doing annexation readings first and then we're moving on to the zoning change reading after that. The other thing that kind of comes up in these processes is how this transitions from a planning commission recommendation into a city council item. And so I just want to let you guys know that staff is continuing to work with City Georgetown staff to make sure that we have the most efficient process that we can for these large items. And so as we move through this, as questions are made, we're constantly reviewing our previous actions to make sure our future actions are in line with everyone's best interest. And so with that, I'm going to pass it off to senior planner, Ms. Elise Kets, to cover the, the basics of this project.
All right. Thanks Holden, thank you council members. So this was an application heard month, two months ago or so for rezoning of the property, the Gaines Farm at the southwest corner of McClellan Circle and Payne's Depot Road. I've kind of included some modified slides just so you guys can kind of see it. So this is aerial imagery of the property here, so we can kind of get pre-familiarized. Can you go a little bit, can you progress? Our concept plan is here, I believe it was included in your guys' application for review. Of course, we're talking about annexation first, so they did, we did condition annexation as part of their zone change request. So if you guys have any questions about the annexation stuff, I can speak to that now or as they kind of come up. Can you go several slides? Nope, just keep going. Also, I'll say when. Just go, just keep going. Keep, keep going. Come on, come on. Oh my goodness. Okay, come on, we're almost there. All right, stop, go back. So this plan has been kind of on the list, is in the urban service boundary since the 96 comp plan from what we can tell. So this is just a, an execution of that plan that's been in place for, oh gosh, 96 was when I was born, so that's 29 years. So it's been in the, kind of been in consideration for that time. So it's been included in the, the urban service boundary, so that's kind of our first step here. I can answer any questions about annexation if you guys have any, but that's kind of a.
Mayor?
Yes.
I have questions. On the application or the Exhibit A that's, was part of the plan, what is, why is it waivers and variances? Can you explain those for, why they're in there, why they've done that?
Can we, sorry, just process-wise, make sure we keep it focused. Can we address the annexation?
That is annexation. That would, that would be a, that would lean to annexation as to yes or no on annexation because of what you're doing with the property is you're going to be changing, because what you're doing with the property has a precedent on why we would accept it or not.
I think probably process-wise, I think that'd be a great question to bring up.
When we get to the zone change and then you can keep the answer in mind when you, when it comes up time for the second reading on the annexation ordinance.
I disagree with that. And I disagree with that because we need the information now to decide whether we want to annex it in or not because of the very conversation that we've had tonight with four department heads telling us that we're having rapid growth. So that we can't handle what we're getting with our rapid growth. So one of the things on here is it looks like, and it's my understanding whether it is or not, that's why I was asking the question, that your property is denser than some other areas that we've had residential on. So that goes back to whether you want to annex it in or not based on growth, what's going to be put on the property, very much determines whether I would want to annex it to the city or not.
Okay, is this something where we need to just, you know, get more information from or is?
You're welcome to proceed how you wish.
So I just want to clarify and stay close for this. We are referring to the staff report, that's PUD waivers review. Is that the section that you're looking at?
Yeah, it actually is, uh huh.
Okay, very good. So I want to start off with one thing. Our staff never, and we do not have the authority to make variances associated with density. Whatever the, the density of the requested zone is, it never exceed that.
Well then explain to me, it says single-family lots to be 50 feet wide and that's a variance from 53 feet.
Yep.
So does that not allow them to put more density of development into the area?
No. So these are two separate issues. So one is a, is a dimensional standard associated with, you know, the, the meets and bounds of specific lots. One's related to how many lots a developer would be able to put on a site over across the entire thing. And so in this case, and working with the developer and they can speak to that for their layout that they were requesting, it made more sense to have just a few, but they're a lot smaller than whatever the standard zone size is. But they did want the ability to have a few smaller lots interspersed without changing the overall density.
If y'all will come on up, if you want to come up here and. Okay, just kind of keep, okay, so.
This is an important thing to understand too. So this is a, a planned unit development. And a part of planned unit developments is the understanding that by granting certain, again, dimensional variances or other things along those lines, that there's an increased level of public amenity that's made along with the project. And so as was just pointed out, one of the things associated with this project is a considerable amount of open space and increased trails and sidewalks and things like that. So why would our office consider certain variances? Oftentimes it's associated with, number one, making a feasible product, but number two, it's incorporated into that planned unit development. And again, the purpose of that planned unit development is to allow certain dimensional variances with the understanding that you're getting an overall better development product.
I think your, I think your commissioners had questions on the density of it too, did they not, when that was one of the questions they had?
Yes, and I, I believe that out of that conversation, again, we had a postponement associated with this case. Spent some time working with the applicants and have a better product because of it and was ultimately recommended to make that zone change and for the city to annex.
I was just concerned about that because one of the things that Chief Johnson made the comment about is your neighbors' problems, the denser we are, the closer we are to each other, your neighbors' problems become your problems, kind of things was what he said earlier. So that concerned me about the density that was in.
And so to clarify again, the density is not being altered. And as far as how close the, you know, the buildings can come to one another, the setbacks, the minimum setbacks that we have have that fire safety aspect baked into them to make sure that if, if in the event there is a structural fire, there's that minimum separation between structures to prevent that from jumping.
Is it still like 14 feet? Would that still, with that, make sure there's 14 feet in between the structures, isn't that what it's supposed to be?
The specific ordinance, I believe was passed in 92 or 96, but it said that.
Before you were born.
Yeah, it depends, was I, was I new or was I not around? And so around that time. And so around that time, an ordinance was passed that stated that single-family dwellings need to have seven and a half foot setbacks from their center property line. So in total, from wall to wall, it is 15 foot, which allows for an apparatus to go through to address a fire potentially in a rear yard or in the back of a property. So we've strongly held people to that since, we've not allowed any variances to be less than the seven and a half feet when you're looking at those single-family residential structures with the interest of keeping people safe through allowing better fire service.
And I did just check, and that has, again, not been varied or has a recommendation to vary that.
Okay, thank you.
How many units are proposed in this project?
Come on up.
I know it's jumping around, but how many units?
It's okay. It's 251 single-family units and 406 multifamily units in total. It is on, that acreage is basically over 90 acres. From the single-family side, you're looking at a density of 2.95. Basically, the entire residential area, including the apartments here, is still under eight units per acre is what you're looking at.
How many houses, again?
251.
Okay. How are you going to handle that, Chief? I know, I know, I know.
Thank you. If you need to address, just be quick, please. Thank you.
Not a problem.
So to kind of get at some of the, why this is such a delicate little dance that everyone's doing when you have a zone change and an annexation, there are very different rules for public hearings for an annexation and a zone change. In order for us to actually give you all substantial evidence that you can base a finding on a zone change, we have to mail out separate letters, there has to be signs posted, and there has to be a notice put in the newspaper. For whatever reason, that has not been done by city council for this particular date, and so that's why we're very cautious to give you all evidence that you all can base your record on, or base your decision on, either which way, it is confined to the record that is before you all, that was handed to the planning commission. However, with an annexation, though, you're not bound by those same rules. And so we're happy to discuss this project kind of from a big-picture concept. We get happy to talk about the annexation, all the details, why we think that it would benefit the city of Georgetown. You heard the chief say that he was actually in favor of growth, and a lot of times, that is because you are basically raising your tax base as a whole, and you're doing it on land that has been planned to be inside the city limits since at least '96. And so that is the type of conversation we are absolutely, you know, happy to have, and we can kind of, you know, give factual answers that are definitely in the record on the project itself. We just have to be very cautious with regards to not providing evidence that you would base findings on either which way you go on the zone change.
Any timing yet because the C L S on that?
Excuse me, sir. Thank you. Okay. All right.
Mayor? I appreciate, I appreciate very much clarification on that. Based on the conversation that we've had tonight with four of our directors and the conversation we had last week with our police chief and what they have found, we are not in, their main threat for us was growth, and all four department heads said that as well as last week. So growth, okay, so if I know nothing what's going on this property, I know because you're coming into the city of Georgetown, there is growth involved. That's obvious, that is, that's what's going to happen to it. So take out any density, any thoughts I have about that, let's just talk about this is growth now. This is now a service area that right now, the city of Georgetown, does not have to be responsible for, but once it passes annexation, this area, regardless of what you put on it, now the city of Georgetown has to be responsive to it. And as of right now, we have heard from our department heads that we cannot handle this extra growth, that it's the biggest threat to Georgetown that we have going for us right now is more growth, whether it's your project or any other project. I have that feeling towards that. And I think we would be remiss if the city of Georgetown was to annex that piece of property into Georgetown right now, knowing that our police is not adequate, we need new police departments, our fire department, we need two new fire departments, and you're going out there, actually Chief Thompson actually talked about on the east end, you're going on the west end that he's talking about, so there's another fire department, so we do need two fire departments, which does mean, does that make it 24 officers or firemen that we're going to have instead of having 12? So we're not ready for it, and the chief said, "Larger buildings, apartments, commercials." I don't know that's what you're doing until we get to the annexation, but I assume that's what you're doing by just knowing that you're coming in Georgetown, and everybody else has come in Georgetown lately in the last few years, that's exactly what they've done, too. So I'm sure you're going to do that as well. So Chief Johnson said, quote, "Chief Johnson, 'Growing faster than we can support.'" The thing I have going for me, that I may not have anything else going for me, I've been around here a long time, and I was here in 2002, that the rest of you were working, but we're 2002. We had the same problem then in 2002, and we are about to run into that brick wall again. So history is doomed to repeat itself if we don't learn from it, and I will not support, as you can tell, I'm not going to support this annexation at this time because we need to get our ducks in a row before we annex any more property into the city of Georgetown. So I won't support the annexation for it because we're just growing too fast, and we need to slow it down, or we're going to be just like we were at the beginning of the 2000s, we're going to be so far behind the eight ball that we're not going to catch up, and that's what we did then. And then I don't want to put the burden of taxation on the people that are here for the new growth that's coming, and that happens in communities, when new growth comes, taxes go up because of the new growth. Schools will come in, we can't pay for school, everybody complains about how high our school tax is now, we have to have more schools. So you're creating at this point in time a situation that the city is not ready for. Now, I know you'll argue the opposite direction of that, and that's fine, that's why you're attorney, but we're not ready for it, and we've been through this procedure before, and we were not ready for it, and it really caused off-guard and really made some hardships for the city of Georgetown that we are still trying to recoup from and just now starting to get our head above water. So I am not in favor of your annexation, so...
I will say one point to that that is actually good news for you.
Okay, go ahead.
A development of this size takes around 20 to 30 years in order to come online. And so it basically, right now, you have an agricultural piece of land that is paying 10% of its assessed value in property tax. As each phase of this comes on, that is going to 100% at a much higher tax rate. When you have the type of multifamily as well, that tax rate skyrockets, but it also does not increase your service area by much at all. In this instance, it increases it only by around 200 feet. However, you are massively increasing the amount of money that Georgetown is getting in order to pay for the types of services, the types of fire stations that are needed, the types of engines that are needed, and that is why you also heard your fire chief say that he's for growth.
I don't know that I heard him say that exactly, but, and I'm not going to put him on the spot, and you're not going to put him on the spot either, but on the bottom line of that, if that was 100% true, what you were saying, and let me just caveat that, if that was 100% true, as to what you're saying, as the city of Georgetown has historically handled things, we wouldn't be in the shape that we've been in over some of these years. So I don't think what you say sounds great, but I don't think it's 100% accurate as far as the city of Georgetown is concerned.
So the Bradley property received its, excuse me, Price Farm Abbey at Old Oxford received its preliminary plat on December 1st, 2008. That first plat was finally approved two years later before a shovel could go in the ground. Ballhoms took that over in 2013. There was basically over 100 single-family lots to be built at that time. We are still not anticipating that to be done until 2030. That was a 22-year period, and so this would be most likely even longer than that. And that is how that the cities is, are able to basically keep up with the development because of the rise in tax base while it is taking a long time to actually build out.
Your commercial does bring up rise in tax base better than, quicker than residential.
And while I can't exactly tell you the tenant, I can say that it is a healthcare-based entity that will be bringing a lot of jobs and not retail jobs. And so again, a much larger benefit where you're not only bringing rooftops, you're also bringing jobs in order to make sure that all the different ways Georgetown can make money from a tax input you're getting with this type of mixed-use development.
Okay. Just a minute, okay, so, yes, go ahead.
I appreciate your comments, and I think that we need to be thoughtful anytime we make a decision like this, but I also have sat in on a lot of studies and have done a lot of thinking about housing and the need for housing in Georgetown. We sit in and we listen to the need actually for more multi-unit housing, which tend to be more affordable for people who are starting out in their lives, and I need to take that into consideration also when I think about annexing property for housing, especially housing that hopefully would increase the tax revenue incrementally such that we might be able to keep up the city services that are needed. So there's a lot to think about, but that is definitely some place that I also land in my mind for people who right now can't either afford a separate, single-family home on a quarter-acre lot, and also for people who can't move to Georgetown because they can't find housing.
And just to piggyback on a little bit, you know, and I appreciate what you're saying there, but this is where I disagree. I think it's important that our job is to provide an avenue, we're talking about housing. I think in Scott County alone, we're about 3,000 units or more, and correct me if I'm wrong on that, Holden is about where we are in Scott County alone, is that, can you make sure I understand that correctly?
I believe that your very talented housing staff is wrapping up the housing assessment, and that is in line with their findings.
We'll get that later, but, you know, I just think that, you know, going forward, you know, we're going to have growth no matter what happens, you know, and whether it comes, it's coming on us right away, and that's going to continue, but we can't sit there and wait, 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 and then attack it. We need to leave, we know that it's a possibility, you just hear them say that this is a project that goes in phases, and it's our job that, listen to that, look at those phases, and then look at the possibility of saying, okay, these will come at that time, maybe we can put these particular things in place for us as a council, how do we address those particular issues? So that being said, I'm going to, yes, you have a question?
I just wanted to say that I was interested in hearing more about, you know, the plans. I mean, that's what we were talking about.
Okay.
And we got sort of...
Sidetracked, yeah.
Sidetracked, a little bit. And so I was just interested if there was anything else that Holden, that you had to say about this property.
Come on up, Holden.
Yeah, I would just kind of roll back to what Elise had started with, which is that it has been within the urban service boundary for a considerable amount of time, and when the planning commission makes a recommendation like that, that has been taken into consideration as well. Within you guys' policies, within our comp plan, you're by no means obligated to annex property into the city, but where services can be provided and where it makes fiscal sense, that is, you know, the recommendation to do that. Obviously, this is a big project, we approve this theoretically, this is your discretion. If this is approved today, as we said, you know, nothing happens today. However, as we have often discussed when it comes to larger, you know, development trends and patterns, you know, you, it is incredibly important to be very forward-thinking with our approach to these issues. We have a comprehensive plan that projects out future growth, and we are growing. We have a comprehensive plan that assigns us certain housing goals. The only way to meet those housing goals is to, by allowing for not any growth, but smart growth. And again, with the consideration that the planning commission has taken towards this project, they recommended approval of this zone change, and again, staff realizing that the project like this can only take place where the urban services condition the annexation on this project. So that's, again, where this conversation lies tonight.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could, one of the things, and Holden, this is, we'll deal with you, that's what the fire department can cover. This project going outside is outside of the four-minute response zone. Okay? How, you know, we're talking about trying to put in the budget this year to build one fire station. We should already have two built and talking about a third, just to cover what we have now. You're wanting to throw about another 300 houses on top of us that we can't cover with the fire department, that we can't cover with the police department, that we can't cover with Republic and Chief Bruin. So at what point does it come off of us and come on to you all, and you've said smart growth, but yet, go, 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 go? At what point does the smart growth fall back into your lap?
So Commissioner Stone, I'll just, or Councilman Stone, I'll push back just a hair. Nobody in my office has a stamp that goes that quick. Every process that we have is very carefully considered and undertaken. I'll point out that that map that was shared has our logo on that map. We partner with many agencies and help provide additional services to demonstrate things like that. Now, as far as smart growth goes, again, I'd say that's every day that we walk into the office, that's what we're focused on doing. Now, when does it come back on us? That came to us whenever we considered that project. Now, if we were to look at our development process and schedule, one of the very first things that we do is have what's called a TRC, or Technical Review Committee. As a part of that, we partner with partner agencies and invite them to comment on any new future developments that we have coming forward. We then incorporate the feedback that we receive to, again, get a better development product at the end of this. So when does it come to us? It comes to us at the front of it. All of these major developments, we see them first, and whether it's staff or the planning commission, we always put our best foot forward.
Okay. Now, let's jump forward. They get their approval, then they start making changes because there's another development that in the preliminary stages of the development, the plans looked one way, and what's being built right now is nowhere near what it was, what it looked like when the original plans came through. How do they come in and make changes, too?
Okay. So again, this is a fantastic process question. So at a zone change, within our regulations, only a concept plan is required. That concept plan's job is to try to reflect the type of development that we can expect with this project without holding them to the standards of either preliminary development plan or final development plan. And so with a project like this, anytime we consider a zone change, it's incredibly important that we realize that the zone has a set of allowed uses within it, that at the discretion of either this developer or the next one who might come in, they have the ability to develop in line with those regulations. So how does it change? Well, that's just a part of the natural process going from a concept plan to preliminary development plan. Once we have a preliminary development plan in place, there are limitations on how much change can take place. Anything that we consider a major change to a preliminary has to go back to the planning commission. And so staff doesn't even have the authority to consider major changes administratively. And so you get another public process, and again, I've said it, I firmly believe that that public process is how we get the better development project, and it's how you slow down that, you know, churning of development and how we end up with that deliberative, thoughtful, smart growth.
I appreciate the, I think, moving forward, we're not taking any action tonight anyway. All we're doing is first reading on this, so, but I appreciate all the comments on this, so let's move forward, it's on the agenda. So at this time, we have first reading.
An ordinance annexing into the city of Georgetown certain real property containing approximately 182.44 plus or minus acres located at or around 1367 Payne's Depot Road, Georgetown, Scott County, Kentucky. Summary, one, annexes into Georgetown city limits by written consent of the property owner in accordance with KRS 81A.412, approximately 182.44 plus or minus gross acres, 194.74 plus or minus net acres located at or around 1367 Payne's Depot Road, Georgetown, Kentucky, 40324, Scott County, PVA parcel number 14030002.0002. Provides repeal of inconsistent law severability or provisions on effective date upon passage of publication. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the city clerk's office, 629 North Broadway, Georgetown, Kentucky, 40324, or at www georgetown ky.gov. Publicly introduced and read for the first time April 28th, 2025. Publicly introduced and read for the first time April 28th, 2025.
And we, you know, we've already discussed the zoning, so there's no sense of us going into detail with that. Yes.
So to clarify on the, the zone change component of it, if you would like to solicit additional testimony or take into consideration information that's outside the record, I would encourage you to consider holding a public hearing of your own where you can do this. We can do that in conjunction with the next council meeting, or we can schedule it before. The window's pretty tight. But if you just want to proceed based on the information you have in the record that's been referred to you, you can do that and make your vote. But I just want to present that option to you if you were in need of more information.
All right. Yes.
Well, I've got a quick question for Holden. You referenced the, and I'll keep it real quick. You referenced the comp plan specifically with the 2024 comp plan. Does this align with that plan along, along the lines of like the neighborhood center, type of development?
So I guess actually if we'll go back a slide or two, we'll take a look there.
That one, keep that one.
So this one lays out the, the future land use kind of proposal for that area. And so you'll see the future land use map has changed between what was adopted in 2017 compared to what was adopted in 2024. And 2024, you'll notice that purple shade, and Elise, catch me on this one, that's a mixed use. That, you know, that was again, one of the, the goals of the 2024 comp plan is to have more mixed-use developments, which this is. And so the short answer, because I'm pretty sure we're getting late in the night, is that yes, this aligns with the comprehensive plan and is well detailed in the Stafford.
Okay, thank you.
And going back with, yes, go ahead.
And just a question to that, but just because it's in a comprehensive plan, the annexation is totally at the behest of the council, whether it is or isn't.
Absolutely.
One hundred percent, okay.
So Emily brought a suggestion to us as a possibility of that. But I need to entertain a motion that some, we want to do that.
I'd like to make a motion that we take Emily's advice on that. I think that'd be great.
So if we could, the motion. Yeah, we state the motion.
That we entertain holding a public hearing to discuss the matter further.
So Emily's talking right now, so I'll just add that, that, that public hearing would be for the purpose of getting information that's outside of the record presented right now. So like, like counsel for the applicant noted, the, the council is confined to what is contained in the record that's been submitted. So when you're making your decision on the zone change, that is the only information that can be considered. If you look at that information and think there's something in here or there are questions not answered, that's where you can, can take that avenue. But I don't know that it was necessarily a recommendation, just putting you on notice that that's an option if you're looking at the four corners of that record and you're not satisfied with, with what you have in front of you.
However, sorry. I think timing-wise, we're a bit locked in, so I think moving forward, just remember this is an option that outside the record even in the hearing, but from a timeline standpoint, 21 days puts us pretty much up to the next council meeting, and so we wouldn't be able to comply with the hearing.
Mr. Menke?
So I, I would just ask the question, what information is it that we're looking for that is not in the record at this point?
Public information, public. And what they think their hardships might be.
If I could kind of expound on the, the, the issue with regards to scheduling public hearings. So when a zone change public hearing is being taken up by a legislative body, there are three types of notices that's required. And there are days associated with each of those notice requirements. You have to put, you have to send out letters to adjacent property owners with, or with basically outside of the 21-day period until these change hearing is. You have to put a, basically a notice in the newspaper, record, seven, or 14 days in advance. And you have to have signs posted at least seven days in advance. And so like the, the issue that we're running up here on is from the date of the planning commission action, the legislative body has to take action within 90 days or the decision of the planning commission holds. And so right now, we're at, I think it's 74 days, which kind of gets us inside of that 21-day window for letters. That's why it's, it's always, it's, you know, if you think that there's going to be a need for a public hearing, it's always best to just, you know, kind of go ahead and schedule.
So if I understand, so we're kind of like we're locked in, is what you're saying at this point, we're kind of locked in? Because we're not in, within that timeframe, if I'm, if I'm understanding that correctly? Okay.
Mayor, may I ask a question? Just to clarify, you said 90 days between planning and zoning and then our legislative body?
Yes.
And you said it's been 74 days?
I believe that is correct.
What has been the holdup?
That, that's not us.
Okay, just a minute. All right, okay, so your question.
Yeah, excuse me, I, I want to know why the 74 days between planning and zoning approval, is it now just now coming to us, we're, we're rushed to make a decision?
Okay, so, bring us Holden back up.
This is a fantastic question. So upon having the, the formal hearing at planning and zoning, planning and zoning makes a recommendation. Because of our internal processes, we do not have the formal minutes to complete the record until the following planning commission meeting. So there's a baked-in 28-day, 31-day window, essentially where it sits. After that, when we have formal minutes clarified for the meeting, we then compile the entire record from all actions that the planning commission has taken related to the case. And then that is forwarded then to the city of Georgetown for consideration. In this case, Emily, I'm sure you're looking for the email right now. I believe we sent the, the, the record two, three weeks ago, something to the effect, actually, I'd say it's three weeks ago. Check me on that. But from then, your staff works to put it before this council for deliberation. When I came up here at the very beginning and I said that we're constantly looking for ways to improve and to move quicker, this is one of those things. We recognize that that lag period between decision date and minutes is a long time to be sitting around. We've, we've discussed, we think we have a solution for that moving forward. And essentially what that looks like is before we have the formal minutes and the completed record, we can submit drafts of those. Again, in this process, the city of Georgetown is a partner along this way. They're aware of the, the cases that are coming before the planning commission. But we need to give you guys more heads up. We'll admit to that.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, in the past, I mean, back when we were having annexations coming in, one right after the other. It was like the annexation came, we had a first reading, a second reading, it passed or it didn't pass. Then the next meeting, we would have the first reading of the zone change. So it didn't waste time as the zone change didn't happen. It clarified what you're telling me, keep the zone change separate from, from the annexation. It kept them separate. But then the council was aware that it was coming based on the first reading of an annexation, had second reading of an annexation. If it didn't pass, well, we were done. If it did pass, then we knew the zone change was going to come next after that. And that gave you time, that gave the public time, and it gave time if you wanted a hearing in there, it gave us time to have a hearing. Now, the last few years, they've all been up annexation, zone change, all at the same time. And some of them backwards actually on how it happens. Because if, if the city council doesn't approve the annexation at the next meeting, there's no zone change. We're done with that. We can't do a zone change on a property that's out in the county. So anyway, that, that gave us more time. It gave the council time to think about it. It gave the community time to talk about it. And really get out there, talk about it, and then gave us time to set up a hearing if we wanted a hearing on it, which we had several back, back then, so, but anyway.
Well, that's the lesson we all learned going forward. So thank you for that. Okay, still, we need to do the, we had done the first reading on this one, we're not?
We have not yet.
And then we need to do the first reading then.
An ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property containing approximately 182.44 plus or minus acres located at or around 1367 Payne's Depot Road, Georgetown, Scott County, Kentucky, from A1 to B4 PUD, C1 and R2 PUD. Summary, one, rezones approximately 182.44 plus or minus acres located at or around 1367 Payne's Depot Road, Georgetown, Scott County, Kentucky, 40324. Scott County PVA parcel number 140-30-002.000. From A1 agricultural to B4 PUD, community commercial, C1 conservation and R2 PUD, medium-density residential. Contended upon and effective only after the passage and publication of an ordinance annexing the subject property into city limits. Two, provides for repeal of inconsistent law, severability of provisions and effective date upon passage and publication. The full text of ordinance is available for examination in the city clerk's office, 629 North Broadway, Georgetown, Kentucky, 40324, or at www georgetown ky.gov. Publicly introduced and read for the first time April 28th, 2025.
Thank you. Next, we have item number, item C, the South Sewer Extension Ordinance sponsors of Willow Hambrick and Todd Stone. And I'm going to turn this over to Chase here, because he, this is in his hall part.
Just a quick housekeeping note before we kind of proceed through the Georgetown municipal business. I'd like to, to speak for a minute and then answer any questions you may have on this item. And then the next two, our finance director and our bond counsel and financial advisor, they're going to come present, talk to you about these next two, then I'll come back for the standard business items, so. Previous meeting, April 14th, I presented on the South Sewer Extension Service Area Ordinance. And that was as it related to the South Sewer Extension Project. And just as a very quick refresher, that was an ordinance that was promised with the original approvals package of the construction contract back in 2021. And it was simply put, as, as brief of an overview, which properties can connect to this infrastructure? Specifically which structures south of the Green Belt in Scott County are eligible to connect to this and benefit from this infrastructure? Counsel offered me some very productive feedback. I think we got some good questions and some suggestions that make the ordinance stronger. And I'd like to just run through the three that, that I wrote down. And then I, I'm sure you all will have other questions moving forward, but these are in no particular order. First, council member Menke, you inquired about inclusion of GPS coordinates within the exhibits for properties south of the Green Belt and GPS coordinates that would note existing structures. Because those are the ones that we're going to allow in that area to connect to the infrastructure. And so we did look at that. What we feel like is a different avenue to get us to the exact same destination is we feel like a more appropriate and quite frankly, a more efficient way to do that is we have 2025 aerial photography as part of our GIS database. And so we feel like that's, that's an easier thing for us to do than the, the GPS coordinates. So when we get a request for service, if it is south of the Green Belt, we can look on that map, which we will keep record of even when we update that. And we can say, as of the date of the ordinance in 2025, there was a structure here. It was included in the ordinance in the exhibit. We've got it on the map. We can allow that connection. We look at it and there's no structure there from that aerial photographer. We know it's new. We can talk to planning and zoning, make sure we understand there's a new project, then we can judge its eligibility for the ordinance. So did want to make sure that we, we researched that. I think that's the appropriate, and I think that achieves your goal.
Yep, thank you.
Second, Mr. Menke inquired about the legality of the ordinance as it related to properties outside of Scott County, in particular two in Fayette County. And I did consult with our outside counsel as well as the city attorney, the three of us sat down. And we believe as a group, and I'm, I'm not speaking attorney speak, but we don't believe that this ordinance will impact or be impacted by those two properties in particular. I don't, if you'd like to see that, I could have Todd write some sort of memo of intent. I'm, I'm not going to pay him to do that until you say you need it. But those two in particular, it's worth noting, one is Maple Grove Mobile Home Park further into Fayette County. That can connect, and what kind of governs that is an agreement executed between city of Georgetown and LFU CG. That was for them paying for part of the project. So we feel like that agreement governs that connection from something that's outside of Scott County. The other is the part of the actual Sawyer Point Mobile Home Park that does extend into Fayette County and kind of similar but different. That is the, that is governed by the user agreement executed between the owner of Mobile Home Park, Georgetown Municipal and the city of Georgetown. So we feel like that has been researched and, and that's covered. We feel like this ordinance is, is good to go from that legal standpoint.
So just clarifying question. So I'm assuming Fayette County actually will have a copy of that agreement as well?
We have one, and I would assume they have one.
I'm good.
Okay.
So then finally, this was discussion, I think, led by council member Tingle Sames, but I think agreed upon universally from the council before we tabled this action, or tabled the first reading, was that I needed to strengthen our language related to eligible properties located south of the Green Belt, again, I keep saying that, and defining that that's only limited to existing structures. We were lacking there. So what I would point to you as far as what changes we made is that if you look at section one, and I'm paraphrasing here, but we've added the language, adjusted the language, no connections to the sanitary sewer collection system shall be permitted for structures or facilities that are not existing as of the effective date of this ordinance. So I feel like that, I hope that addresses your concern there. I think that strengthens it. I think that was a good addition. And I think that that's, the ordinance is drafted now. It reflects what was requested by the council then in 2021 with this approval. The administration then, as well as, as the Georgetown Municipal Board of Commissioners.
Just one question on that, and actually it's what Dan asked us earlier.
Yes, ma'am.
Why was a drier property different than some of the other property? Is, because it, it was an exception? Was there something done with that?
Yes, ma'am. And I'm assuming you're speaking of the one that has road frontage to US 25.
I believe so.
So yes, I can give you an explanation. There were a few outliers and we've called those out.
Okay.
And, and they were for a specific purpose. One on the Dwyer property, in the early 2000s, he had received his zone change for that property that switched that from, to B2, so that's already approved.
Back then.
Back then for development. So what we were saying, kind of two things happened. One is, we're going to have a sewer right there. He intends to develop that. It's already approved through planning and zoning years, years before. Do we want that on a septic system when we've got a sewer right there? I think all of us agree the answer is no. Second of all, in his easement negotiation, he said, you're going to give me a stubout for that line or I'm not giving you the easement. And Mr. Dwyer, he, he had multiple properties through this project corridor. He was, he was the single property owner that we had to do the most easement business with. So that's what I feel like, that original agreement, or original zone change that allowed that development. This, this ordinance is not allowing that development. He, he can do that regardless. Is that, am I saying anything that you feel like is, I don't?
Zoning uses by right or zoning uses by right?
Okay. So just, and to go into other ones that kind of had that exception, the Grace Christian Church, they're doing their outreach center. So they are on a, a large septic system. And they made us aware when we're negotiating that easement that, that they're, they're doing that. So that was approved through planning and zoning, either way, regardless of whether they're tying onto our system or not. Again, I think rather than do an expansion and them having to do a larger septic system, this is a better way to provide service to that property. So those are two outliers. Then I think the third would be the Mobile Home Park Sawyer Point itself at the time of the project. And I don't know the exact numbers. I should have had that in front of me, but it's around, they have over 500 platted units. But at the time we started this project, I believe there were 376 and they couldn't expand. So once they, once they do away with those package plants and they get on our system, then they can build out those slips. And they're already platted. It's just they can't fill those slips. They're sitting empty. So that's kind of, I guess, another exception, but that was noted in the user agreement. And that's been part of that discussion ever since the project's inception.
Thank you.
All right.
Is this a time to ask, you have a question?
Yes, you may ask a question. Go ahead.
Is section three necessary? Isn't that just stating what we can already do?
I think it's, you can have section three or we could amend an ordinance. It's, it's two, two different avenues getting the same destination. I think that we can I think that we can, we've talked, and it's never made it into a draft, we talked about, do we want to, how rigid does this need to be? Do we want to leave ourselves any flexibility for things we don't know to consider today? And so, that, we finally added that piece in. Is it necessary? No, that's your prerogative.
Because, correct me if I'm wrong, and I'm, and I'm often wrong, you, later on, if somebody wanted to, if it, if it went, it was in compliance with the, with the comprehensive plan, and there was water capacity available, and then it went to the Water Board and they agreed with it, and then it came to City Council and we agreed with it, we could have another ordinance to amend this, to go ahead and have other structures.
Absolutely.
Even without Section 3. So.
Whatever.
You know, what, what is the ultimate utility of Section 3? Because we already have everything.
I think it's just simply of, of, do we want to provide ourselves any flexibility to deal with things that we've not considered today?
But, but we already have that flexibility, right? Or not?
I think we do, if you want to amend the ordinance. So, you could, you could do this with it or without it.
I would like to amend the ordinance to, to strike Section 3, since it doesn't seem to be ultimately necessary to where.
We still achieve the goals there of, of doing what we said we wanted to do with this, is protect the Green Belt, or protect south of the Green Belt.
Absolutely.
Whatever your prerogative.
Yes, yeah.
Mayor, I mean, I think the only real benefit of Section 3 is just public transparency. That it, everybody knows that, yes, that's still an option out there if it be needed.
I think it's a control point, because you are the council making the decision versus if 10 years down the road, you're just entrusting that council. So, it's a policy call, obviously, like all these are, whether you want that choice to be made here, or whether you want to test out in a future council who in real time makes this.
All right. So, I guess at this time, so.
Is there a second?
Is there any other questions, though? Any other questions related to the?
Both the motions are filed right now.
Sorry.
The motion was made by you to make an amendment.
Yeah, just to strike.
To strike.
Section 3.
Section 3.
And it's a policy call, I mean, I can sleep either way.
Okay. And then, so, made a motion for that? Do I have a second for that? I guess we keep it as his. All right? Okay? All right. I guess we, if anything else, we can go ahead and do first reading.
In order to establish a service area, we're going to make a water and sewer services South Sewer Extension Summary. One, identify specific properties that shall be allowed to connect to the sanitary sewer collection system that has been constructed as part of the South Sewer Extension Project. Requires property owners connecting to the South Sewer Extension Project to pay the unit cost per acre portion as defined in Privilege Fee Agreement Number 16. The full text of ordinance, of this ordinance is available for examination in the City Clerk's Office, 629 North Broadway, Georgetown, Kentucky, 40324, or at www georgetown ky.gov. Publicly introduced and read for the first time April 28, 2025.
Next, we have the 2025 Series A Bond Anticipation Note Ordinance.
Mayor, Council, good evening. What we have in front of you tonight is a Bond Anticipation Note Ordinance and a Bond Ordinance that underlines the Bond Anticipation Note Ordinance. We have a Bond Anticipation Note, or BAN as we shorten it, with Truist Bank that we obtained last year for $33.5 million. That note is expiring on June 1st of 2025. We need to replace that note with what we intend to be our last piece of interim financing, which will be BAN Number 5. Of course, goes without saying, this is all to pay for our Plant 1 Expansion Project per Board's direction in April. Baird, our municipal advisors, have solicited bids for a replacement for BAN Number 4. Those bids are due back on Wednesday, April 30th. BAN Number 5 will be callable without penalty at any time over the next year, as we plan for permanent financing to be completed by the end of calendar year 2025.
All right. Are there any questions? First reading, Madam Clerk?
At a duly convened meeting held on April 28, 2025, the City of Georgetown, Kentucky, the City gave second reading, gave first reading to an enacted ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Georgetown, Kentucky Authorizing the Issuance of Its Water and Sewer Revenue Bond Anticipation Note 2025 Series A in an approximate aggregate principal amount of $33,590,000, which amount may be increased by up to $33,360,000 or decreased by any amount to refund at maturity the City's Water and Sewer Bond Anticipation Note 2024 Series A in anticipation of the issuance of the City's Water and Sewer Revenue Bonds 2025 Series A, Designating the City as the payment agent and registrar for the 2025 Series A Note, Approving the Form of the 2025 Series A Note, Approving the Preparation of a Request for Proposals and Other Offering Documents for the 2025 Series A Note, Authorizing Designated Officers of the City to Execute and Deliver the 2025 Series A Note, Authorizing and Directing the Filing of a Notice with the State Local Debt Officer, Providing for the Payment of and Security for the 2025 Series A Note, Establishing a Note Redemption Fund and a Cost of Issuance Account for the 2025 Series A Note, Providing for the Sale of 2025 Series A Note to the Best bidder and Repealing Inconsistent Ordinances. The ordinance authorizes the issuance by the City of a series of its Water and Sewer Revenue Bond Anticipation Notes in the approximate aggregate principal amount of $33,590,000, the 2025 Series A Note, for the purpose of, one, fully refunding and retiring the outstanding amount of the City's Water and Sewer Revenue Bond Anticipation Note 2024 Series A dated May 30, 2024, at maturity and anticipation of the future issuance of the City's Water and Sewer Revenue Bonds 2026 Series A; two, paying capitalized interest for the 2025 Series A Note; and three, paying the cost of issuance of the 2025 Series A Note. The ordinance also approves the execution and delivery by the City of a request for proposal and other offering documents for the sale of the 2025 Series A Note. The 2025 Series A Note is to be sold in private negotiated sale in accordance with provisions of Chapter 424 of the Kentucky Revised Statutes or by the solicitation of proposals as required by law. The 2025 Series A Note is to bear interest payable at a single rate per annum from its date of issuance to maturity. As shall be established upon the sale of the 2025 Series A Note, the interest rate applicable to the 2025 Series A Note shall not exceed 10% per annum. Introduced in public or of the first time April 28, 2025.
All right. Item E, 2026 Series A Bond Ordinance. Yes.
Okay.
At a duly convened meeting held on April 28, 2025, the City of Georgetown, Kentucky, the City gave first reading to and enacted an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Georgetown, Kentucky Authorizing the Issuance of Its Water and Sewer Revenue Bonds 2026 Series A in the approximate aggregate principal amount of $37 million, which amount may be increased by up to $33,700,000 or decreased by any amount, for the purpose of refunding its Water and Sewer Revenue Bond Anticipation Note 2025 Series A at or in advance of maturity, Designating a Paying Agent and a Registrar for the 2026 Series A Bonds, Authorizing Designated Officers of the City of, City to Execute and Deliver the 2026 Series A Bonds and all related documents on behalf of the City, Providing for the Payment of and Security for the 2026 Series A Bonds, Establishing a Principal Account, Interest Account, and Cost of Issuance Account for the 2026 Series A Bonds, Approving the Preparation of a Preliminary Official Statement and Final Official Statement for the 2026 Series A Bonds, Providing for the Award of the 2026 Series A Bonds to the Lowest and Best bidder, Approving the Filing of a Notice with the State Local Debt Officer and Repealing any inconsistent ordinances. The ordinance authorizes the issuance of a series of Water and Sewer Revenue Bonds by the City in the approximate aggregate principal amount of $37 million, those 2026 Series A Bonds, for the purpose of, one, refunding the City's Outstanding Water and Sewer Revenue Bond Anticipation Note 2025 Series A or at or in advance of maturity, the proceeds of which fully refunded and retired the City's Outstanding Water and Sewer Revenue Bond Anticipation Note 2024 Series A at maturity; two, paying the cost of credit enhancement for the 2026 Series A Bond, if any, and three, paying the cost of issuance of the 2026 Series A Bonds. The ordinance also approves, A, the preparation and distribution of preliminary official statement and final official statement for the 2026 Series A Bonds, B, the official terms and conditions of bond sale for the 2026 Series A Bonds, and C, the execution of continuing disclosure agreement in connection with the 2026 Series A Bonds. The 2026 Series A Bonds are to be sold in an advertised public sale in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 424 of Kentucky Revised Statutes as required by law. The Series 20, the 2026 Series A Bonds shall bear interest payable at a rate or rates from their date of issuance to their respective maturities as shall be established upon their sale. Introduced in public or of the first time April 28, 2025.
Thank you. All right. Item 10, Georgetown Municipal Water and Sewer Service, A, Mission Communications, $12,876.40.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a purchase order, this is for our SCADA service contractor, and SCADA being Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition. SCADA, it allows us to monitor and control our system remotely. So, we have 20, 23 pump stations that are under this SCADA control, and these are obviously facilities that are not manned or staffed 24/7. So, we need this, this software and this, this consulting. So, this is a budgeted purchase in our FY '25 budget, and it is, it is a sole source purchase, as they're the ones that, this is their software and they can service it. So, it gives us 24/7 monitoring from the consultant, and it is for a year's worth of services. So, we previously, this is something that didn't have to come to you because we paid it quarterly, they said if we would pay it all at once annually, there'd be 20% savings. So.
Motion, Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay. Since everybody jumped in the gun. Motion made by Mr. Mitchell, second by Mr. Menke. All right. Are there questions and or comments? All those in favor of Mission Communications for $12,876.40 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Item B, Stratford, Stratford Pump and Supply for $12,800, excuse me, $12,987.
Need a new pump control panel at pump station number 12, that serves primarily a small service area in the vicinity downtown Hamilton, Young, and Hickman. Panel is over 30 years old, we've retrofitted it a number of times, we can't do it anymore. So, this is one of our budget, our purchases that'll come out of our collection system budget, and we got our quotes there, the quote is in order, and Stratford being the low price, so we're recommending this to you for approval.
So moved.
Motion's made, do you have a second? Second made by Mr. Hampton. Are there further questions and or comments? All those in favor of Stratford Pump and Supply for $12,987 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Item C, Judy Construction for $500,256.28.
This is for work completed in March on our wastewater Plant 1 expansion and upgrade. And so, I will just say that with the flooding, the rain events, we've definitely had some struggles over the past weeks, but I know Judy is, Judy Construction's still working very hard, trying to get this to beneficial use as soon as possible. We've been doing this for a number of years, this is somewhat of a routine monthly payment, even though I recognize the magnitude of these monthly payments, but I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Do I have a motion, Mayor? Motion made by Mr. Stone, do I have a second?
Second.
Second made by Ms. Hambrick. Are there further questions and or comments? All those in favor of the motion for Judy Construction for $500,256.28 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Now, item D, moving service, mowing services, recommendation of award.
This is our rebid of our annual mowing and snow removal contract. Our previous contractor is no longer doing this type of work, and so, we had to put this back out for bid. This is an annual contract with multiple renewals that with both parties agree we can execute, and this covers mowing, snow removal of pump stations, our remote locations, administration building, tank sites, treatment plants. We have five bidders. Unfortunately, our two low bidders did not complete their bid forms, so they have to be considered non-responsive, unfortunately. And this bid, it is based on the total cost of mowing all the sites and doing the snow removal for one occurrence, so that's what our basis of award is on the bid. And while the single occurrence, that's not of a spending level that would require council approval, we do have to consider this on what we will spend annually. So, that, that we do anticipate being over our board-approved spending threshold. So, I'm bringing this to you, and just for comparison, last year, we paid $1,890 to mow 46 sites, and now, we will be paying $3,445. That's increased to 53 sites, but that 3445, that is also includes snow removal, which the previous number did not. So, price is going up, but honestly, it's not as much as what I anticipated, so we'll factor this increase into our budget and move forward.
What was that amount again, please?
For, per occurrence, we, for the basis of award of the bid is $3,445.
Okay. Thank you.
Chase? Yes. Oh, sorry. When you say per occurrence, is that? So, right now, it'll be weekly for mowing. But that wouldn't include, obviously, snow removal right now. Right, so you're looking at 3,000 a week, or? Actually, I think it'll be right around, I should have done that analysis, I apologize. Mowing only, it'll be less than 3,000 per occurrence, for 53 sites. And then, the snow removal, how, how is that priced? Is that? I think it's per occurrence that we call them out, and it's, it's based on prob, it's a, I think it's based on. Time and material? Time and, well, no, it's a unit cost for, for a location. I think, but the question is, do we pay them on occurrence? And that's, I think it's, when we call them out is based on the snow event, as far as number of inches when they get dispatched. And we've had trouble with that. We've ended up doing that ourselves for a few years, and we really need help with that. Thank you.
Item, we entertain a motion?
Motion.
Motion made by, okay, motion made by Mr. Hampton, second made by Mr. Menke. All those in favor of the motion for mowing services, recommendation of award, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Last item, Hazen and Sawyer for $47,000.
So, this, Hazen is our water and sanitary sewer engineering consultant, does our hydraulic modeling and planning associated with that, and it's pretty nice, unexpected. I get a shout out for Chief Thompson, because he's gone. Related, when we did this, when the board and council allowed me to do this, is something we needed to have as part of the utility that we've become as far as size, unintended consequence in a good way, it helped their ISO rating. I didn't know that would happen. But this is a further step in development of our water model. This task order, it's related to work on our long-term water supply and future planning of our water distribution network. This is a planning effort for this $47,000. So, over time, we're going to need more water than we can produce at our water treatment plant sourced from Royal Spring. And so, when, we will have to purchase more, which we are already doing, but we will purchase more over time. We have to know how we're going to receive that water from wholesale suppliers, where we're going to receive it at a point of delivery, how we're going to move it through our system. This analysis is going to give us a plan for how we're going to do that in the future. Demand is only going to go up, and so, we, this is about being prepared, and this doesn't force us to take any action today on a capital project, we just know what the project or projects are when that need arises. So, I want to be thinking ahead, want to be prepared, I don't want to get caught again, kind of similar where we were a little bit behind on the wastewater plant, feel like this is necessary, so pay for this with our engineering budget.
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Hambrick. Do I have a second? Second made by Ms. Mitchell. Are there further questions and or comments?
Mayor, just a quick comment, thank you for this proactive approach.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Any other comments or questions? All those in favor of Hazen and Sawyer for $47,000 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 14, which is the Office of Affordable Housing and Homelessness Prevention Quarterly Update, Candace Whitehouse. Okay, and she's got stuff to give us.
Still waiting, is that?
And she's here to give you a quarterly update.
Yes, thank you all. So I'm passing around my report there so you can kind of see the quarterly update, but I'm just going to hit on a few items. I know the big thing that everybody is waiting on is a final report from RKG for our housing needs assessment. I am also eagerly awaiting this to be wrapped up, so we can move forward. However, after their last presentation to the Housing Needs Committee, that was an open meeting that was attended by some of you, so thank you for coming out to that. I did receive feedback from those, some of those in attendance, that were not happy with our product as it is right now. I also personally felt like it was lacking what we had been promised, and so an effort to ensure that this housing needs assessment we've all worked so hard on is a document that we want and need. We've decided to reschedule that final presentation that was previously scheduled on May 1st. I'm actively working with Russell and Summer from RKG to make improvements and informing them of all of our concerns. Actually went back and forth with them multiple, multiple times today, and so I can see their efforts to fulfill all of our requests. I'm optimistic that we can bring this forward to be a high-quality and helpful product for our community, and so whenever that is accomplished, we will be bringing that to you. Following that final report from RKG, we'll have concrete goals that we can begin to work on and work towards. Among the many different goals we have and areas that we want to target, part of that implementation plan will include partnering with Planning and Zoning to see what we can improve to be as affordable housing-ready as we can be here in our community. We are already on track to be very affordable housing-ready. Since I've been in this role, I've sat down with Planning and Zoning multiple times to review and discuss how we can be ready for affordable, more affordable housing, or finding ways to making housing affordable. And one way that we have checked our status is to compare against the policy suggestions in the book, The Affordable City. One, out of more than 50 policy suggestions made in that book, Scott County is on track with many of them already. A couple examples of those would be that we allow for mixed-use zones, which opens the door for many projects. And another example of this would be that processes that run through that office, although maybe doesn't feel like it sometimes, are much shorter in timeframe than a lot of the communities that we're reading about. And even those two things, I was asking Holden about, is it okay to list those? And he said, we are doing good in them, but we still also want to always be getting better and finding ways to improve. So his attitude is even, even though they're doing great, we're still improving. So I know that councilperson Hampton brought that up as a question in one of a meeting recently about my office working with Planning and Zoning, so I just wanted to assure the whole council that I'm consistently in communication with Holden and his staff, because me being successful in my office requires teamwork with their office. Another thing that I have listed on my report is our ESG grant, and that has been moving forward very nicely. We have been utilizing those funds. The emergency shelter funds are going towards work happening at the Gathering Place, at the Low Barrier Shelter. And so they have now, because of that additional funding and just, I think, how well that Low Barrier Shelter is going, clients are able to be served there 24/7 now. So if you recall, when we very first started, it was only during weather, extreme temperatures, and then that evolved into every day, but both those times were 8:00 PM to 8:00 AM, and so at 8:00 AM, folks were asked to leave the Low Barrier Shelter. But since then, they have now shifted to a 24/7 service, so folks can stay on their property, receive services, obviously be fed at the, at the kitchen, and that is a really major success for our community. It allows folks to have a place to go during the day and helps with some of the disruption that can happen from people who are displaced. And so I know Heather Johnson is very proud of that. I'm really proud of that, and I think that's a big community service that we have here that I don't think would have been made possible nearly as soon had we not had these ESG funds. As you can see there, we've served over 100 clients with our ESG funds since July 2024. 16 of those have transitioned into the actual Gathering Place programming, so that is a different program with a little more structure that some folks maybe aren't ready for when they first seek services, but they have transitioned after some time. And then five went straight from the Low Barrier Shelter into housing, so we're very excited about that number. And then the other part of that rapid rehousing, or sorry, ESG grant is the Rapid Rehousing Program, and that has been a lot of effort to get off the ground. I've had to do a lot of training and getting certified and things, and, but we are going to hopefully be moving in our first clients very soon, and so that is really making a big difference for individuals in our community. One man that I'm working with has been homeless for over two years, has a lot of barriers to getting into housing, but this Rapid Rehousing Program is really knocking down a lot of those barriers, and once we get him into housing, he's really set up for being able to stay housed. And so that is getting somebody who has been literally homeless on the street and also in shelter for more than two years into housing, being able to be a productive citizen. And so just one of the many clients that we're able to help with our Rapid Rehousing Program. That, that grant is really wonderful, but we also want to keep growing those type of prevention efforts, and so the good work that we are doing is not being overlooked. Some folks from KHC, the Kentucky Housing Corporation, have reached out and complimented our program and have also, on one occasion, asked us to apply for more funding with different streams in the future. So I think at first, our model was unique and maybe a little scary, but I think we're proving to them that this can work, and we're able to bring funding to smaller nonprofits who maybe can't reach that federal funding on their own, and so I feel really great about the direction that that is going, and so, yes. And then we are also, Karen and I are working on the Community Development Block Grant for the city. So this is a funding program available to county and county governments. This is a robust, robust funding opportunity that we have access to as a city. So Karen, our grants administrator, and I are working on that proposal in partnership with the Gathering Place to submit an application for the Low Barrier Shelter. The project ask is, we would want to construct a separate building on the Gathering Place property that would be able to expand the capacity and ability to serve all different types of households. So right now, the Low Barrier Shelter has limitations with how many beds that they have, and Heather gets very creative on how she can serve as many people as she can, but the separate building would bring that number up, but then also allow us to serve all different types of households. And so what I mean by that is if you are a woman with children, or a man with children, or a husband-wife with children, or an uncle with a niece and nephew, whatever family unit that is, we want to be able to serve them and keep their family unit intact instead of either breaking them apart or having them choose to sleep in their car or on the street because they want to be together. And so this new building would allow us the flexibility to serve all types of family units, which is something that in the very near future, I think is going to be required for federal funding streams, but then also just something we want to be able to say we can do here in our community. So Heather is al, already working to be able to serve that, but this building will help us be, be able to be prepared for that, too. And that's all I think that I have on my sheet, but I did want to say, as we reach our two-year mark, almost two-year mark of this office being in operation, we've made great progress with the resources that we have. I know sometimes it's tempting to compare this office to the ones in Lexington and Louisville, but I would encourage folks to keep in mind that the office here in Georgetown is 10-plus years newer, and we do not have access to the same resources. So affordable housing and homelessness prevention are two big, separate issues that take time, money, energy, and effort to tackle. Attention that is always found in my day-to-day work is tackling the issues of today, of unhoused folks that are living in our community today and homelessness prevention that could happen today versus future projects that will make a really big difference down the line, such as affordable housing development and housing change. So with the already limited resources that we have, we tried to make the best decisions we can to address both day-to-day with what we have where we are. Right now, this office is making big strides in the prevention and the reaction to our growing unhoused population that I'm personally proud of, but the affordable housing portion is also receiving attention and effort, but those seeds take longer to see bloom. Pulling from my knowledge and work similar to this in my previous 10-year career, big change comes from day-to-day progress that seems very small at the time. It is just the nature of how development, big projects work, and from what I've seen, how government works, a little slow. It would be nice to snap our fingers and see affordable housing projects appear, but that would be very naive of a person to think that would happen. So I'm happy to answer questions, but my report is in front of you.
Well, let me, first of all, thank you, and, and I appreciate the fact that, you know, on this housing needs assessment, if it's not what we want, it's not going to help us. I applaud the fact that you say, hey, we need to put a pause on this, go back to them and make sure they get the part, what we want that's going to meet the needs, because until we get something where you can have, that information will make, will help you to understand or help you make a decision on a plan going forward, how do we address these particulars? What is our concrete plan for that? In order to have that plan, you got to have something, data that's going to fit the needs of Georgetown, Scott County.
Yes.
And I appreciate you doing that and, and giving us a quarterly update. Are there any other questions that you have of Candace? Again, you know, I, I'm out and about, and I see some of the things at the, over at the Elizabeth Village, working with them, and also over to the Gathering Place, you know, people are talking about the office that you, and what you're doing, and, and they'll see, they're, people see, but the affordable housing, you know, that's going to take a little longer. That just, that's in itself, and we're not the only one in that boat. Trust me, we're not the only one. That is an epidemic that's going around, but I appreciate the effort that we're trying to get there, but it's going to take us a little time to get there.
Thank you for bringing that. Yes, appreciated a lot.
All right, next is the Finance Department Municipal Order for Stockyard Bank's Investment Renewal.
Hello. As Councilmember Hampton said earlier, we have about $500,000 cash balance in our stockyard investment portfolio. Bringing this to council, the Finance Committee recommended that we go with a 12-month investment rather than a two-year investment, assuming it could yield approximately 4%. They did say it'll be right at that, and of course, obviously rates change day-to-day, but indicated that that was our wish to have 12 months if we could get approximately 4%. And so it'll be close.
And, and just to top it on that, and why we came to this decision is that, as you mentioned, you don't know what the, the interest rate is going to be, but we know, we do know what we got granted hand, and by locking it in for one year at that rate, it's better for us to have that than, you know, try to do it at a shorter term, then find out, oh, the interest rate go down, and then there we are. So that was probably the reason why we bring this to council in that direction. So I need to have a motion?
Motion made.
Motion made by Ms. Mitchell. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second made by Ms. Hambrik. Other further questions and or comments? All those in favor of the Municipal Order for Stockyard Bank's Investment Renewal signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay?
Aye.
You going to say nay? Okay. Let the, let the record reflect that it's passed. Item 14, old business is backyard chickens?
The only thing I would say on that, Mayor, if I may, is I know that you're, you're working on some things, and I appreciate that, and I think the people that are interested in this appreciate that. I did find it interesting what Catherine said tonight about the state ag inspector may do, may do that work, and if we could explore that as you're looking at, looking into different ways to enforce.
Yeah, I got, I got that written down.
Okay, that's all I had to add to that. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. All right. New business, all right. Council comments? All right, let's start with you, Mr. Stone.
It's late. I don't have anything, sir.
Ms. Mitchell?
I do have something. We've heard a lot the last, last council meeting and this council meeting from the heads of our departments, and what I heard them say was not that they couldn't handle things, and they couldn't handle growth. What I heard them say is, this is what we need in order to do that. And so we're considering, we're spending the next few weeks considering the budget, and I think it's imperative that we think long and hard about what they've asked us to do in order for them to meet the growing needs of our community. Just think hard, because they didn't say they couldn't do it. They said, this is what we need to be able to do. So that's all I want to say about that, so.
Thank you. Mr. Hampton?
Just to piggyback a little bit on Ms. Mitchell, Lesby Mitchell's comments, as far as department heads, thank you all very much for the work that you put into that. It's very informative for, for us to know, not only for us, but also for the community as well. So we really appreciate all the effort that has gone into that, and, well, well done. Thank you.
Ms. Hambrik?
I echo that. I, I think if anybody listens to this on YouTube for the entirety of tonight, they will see a hard-working departmental government at work, and I'm thankful for that, and I echo what Tammy is saying. Our budget can enable some growth. It does need to be smart growth, but it's not that we, I, I agree, I don't, I didn't hear our department heads saying that we cannot grow. I heard them say that you need to enable us to take care of what we do legislate. I also want to give a shout out to the Haley House that opened up this week, which I went to the ribbon cutting, I think the mayor was there, and maybe some others. I think it's a very needed thing, and it was a beautiful opening, and I think it'll be fully operational in, in August. So, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Minky?
Thank you, Mayor. Two quick things I too want to, to mention. From a budget perspective, we have to be very strategic, and growth happens, costs go up, and so we have to keep pace with that, but we have to do it very strategically, and we have to continue to grow our services and provide our folks with the resources that they need to do their job effectively and safely. So, you know, I think that's just a fact of life that we all have to deal with, and so I strongly encourage the, the mayor to take a very strong look at that as you develop the budget to bring to us. The second item I just want to mention is, as we talk about all the additional revenue, potential revenue sources that we have, I've, I've got an opportunity tomorrow with Eddie to go to a, a city in Indiana that I'm familiar with, and I've got connections, and some other folks have connections, too, that have a stormwater utility, and they've been operating that stormwater utility for over 10 years. And so they've got a lot of great information and lessons learned that we're hoping to gather tomorrow, and after we process that, certainly I'll, I'll bring that back and share that with you all as well. But again, it gives us that opportunity to go to other places that have experienced the same type of growth. It's a very similar community as Georgetown, sits between two intersta, interstates. It is seeing phenomenal growth and is a suburb to a, to a larger city that still maintains its, its separation. So again, there's lots of connections there and lots of similarities, and so we hope to be able to bring some information back, so it would be helpful.
Thank you. Ms. Sands?
Two, two things. One, the ladies that were here last time around that had the issues with their apartment Two, two things. One, the ladies that were here last time around that had the issues with their apartments, did the city get any resolution to them?
I, I, yeah, come on up. I can only speak from the utility standpoint. I spoke with them before they left the meeting, and then I followed up with them the next day. The conjecture that it might be a sewer problem, we dispatched on-call that night, and then we followed up the next day. And confirm that is not a sewer problem. I will say, I, when I spoke to all three of them, I don't think that they've got particular resolution, but they did say, them coming to council and being before you all, it definitely got something moving because they said they'd seen more action from the owner and I guess other city departments, whether it be code enforcement, whoever. They said people were out there and people were swarming, so.
Okay, well, good. Keep us, keep us informed on that, because that was a sad story that they were telling. So I wanted to see if there's anything to, to what we could do for them. But the other thing is, for the summer, is it a possibility for the sun that's out on Parrish Pike and Cherry Blossom to do something to enhance that this summer? Because I see a lot of complaints on Facebook about that, and see if we can, can do a little more with it.
We are working on it as we speak.
Good, good.
And there is a planning in place to improve our signage throughout the whole city.
I saw them out working today, so that was great. You did too, Ron?
Yeah.
Yeah, in closing, thank you for our department heads for their wonderful presentations, and we appreciate all you do. Mr. Tony, good to meet you, and welcome to Kentucky from Texas. And in closing, you know, please come to more council meetings. They're not all nearly five hours long. So just keep coming. We love to have you and love to hear more from you. Thank you.
All right, if there's no other business to be brought to this council, this meeting is adjourned.